Hi, do you hear it live, Mr. Mayor?
Great, thank you. So we're going to reconvene into open session. And we're going to have a closed session announcement with City Attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the City Council went into closed session to discuss the items identified on the closed session agenda. There was no reportable action taken.
Great, thank you. So we adjourn our closed session and we are going through. Reconvene at the City Council, regular meeting, welcome for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. So can we please have the Pledge of the Flag? And we have some lovely young people here to help us with that. So I want to introduce Josephina or Fina and Cooper Graham. So they will lead us in the pledge.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terrific, thank you so much. So can we have your mom come up? So Jennifer, right? So I will wager that you probably would never guess where we met, where I met these two, two fine children. So we met, actually, at the December Polar Plunge with Chris Taylor of the Dodgers. And we all completed that, and we all have our medals to prove it, right? So I think what we do is we clink the medals. There we go. So I just want to have you tell the people, first of all, how to feel. I know cold. But then, why did you decide to do that? Well, first explain what it was, too.
So basically, we went into the ocean early in the morning on, over the weekend in December. And we did this because it was for the CT3 Foundation and the Friendship Foundation, and it's supporting kids with disabilities. And the reason we wanted to do this is because we felt like we needed to help others that needed our help.[156.22][156.25](APPLAUSE).
How did it feel to you? How did you enjoy going out?
It was really fun because we all got to splash in the water and play around.
Now, did you run right in? Or did you like have to, like me, where I went like?
No, like, like half away.
Oh, that's great. Well, you also did it with us, right?
I did. It was great. I think when you have 100 or so people charging the ocean, you have to get some of the momentum. You can't be the one that's going to stand on the beach. So we all did it. But it was great, like Fina said so eloquently. It was for a really good cause, and it was just a really fun event. And I hope, I could foresee in a city like, great city like Manhattan Beach, it's going to build momentum. And I bet sometime there'll be 5,000 people going in the ocean with us. So it'll be great.
Oh, that's great. Well, thank you again for doing it. And it's just been great meeting with, meeting with you. So I want to give you a certificate of recognition on behalf of my colleagues here on City Council, that we recognize Josephine or Fina and Cooper Graham for leading the City Council and the community in the Pledge of Allegiance, but also really putting, literally putting yourselves out there and doing something for others. And that's the best example that you can provide. So thank you very much for that.[242.51][242.54](APPLAUSE). And then Mayor Pro Tem's going to give you a...
Was the mayor wearing his speedo?
There's photographic proof, but there would have to be a great shaded out area there.
I think you guys are crazy for going in that cold water.
Except for a good cause.
Yes, of course.
Aim to the right, the lady there in the blue jean jacket.
And Jennifer is the co-owner of Laird, right? The recently opened Laird athletic wear in Metlocks Plaza. So there you go.
We have more, right?
All right. So we're going to stay up here.
We have to do roll call.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery?
I am here as well.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoer?
Present.
Mayor Franklin?
That's Medalist Franklin, yes. I am here. Okay, and now we move to the ceremonial calendar. And we are very honored To recognize Jewish Heritage Month.
Jewish American.
A Jewish American Heritage Month. And I'm going to pass it over to Mayor Pro Tem to do the introductions.
Oh, thank you. Just, okay, thank you. All right. First of all, I want to thank the mayor, because last, yeah, let me get this here all the way. We usually do it in a consent calendar where we say, oh, and it's Peace Officers Month, it's Public Works Employees Month, et cetera. And I said, hey, Jewish American Heritage Month, too. And you took it a step further and decided to make it a little more ceremonial. So I really, really appreciate that. So if I could have Rabbi Joshua Kukalev from CTJ and Jeremy Stern, the president of CTJ, and Rabbi Yossi Mintz from the Jewish Community Center come up, we have a proclamation honoring Jewish American Heritage Month. And both of these gentlemen, religious leaders are members of our community, both of the synagogue and the Jewish Community Center, which is what Rabbi Yossi is, leads, are both in our community. And both are good friends of mine, but also have done so much for not just the Jewish members of our community, but everyone in our community through the Friendship Foundation, through so many efforts that Congregation CTJ does. And we are so lucky that you are in our community. So this is a great pleasure of mine. And I'm going to give you the mic. Is that, I don't know. Do we get, do rabbis know how to use a mic? It's a, two minutes, guys, come on. Dueling rabbis.
Never give a rabbi a mic. That's dangerous. I just want to say, in a world where sometimes the darkness can make blessings harder to see, one of the blessings we really feel at CTJ is the fact that we're here in Manhattan Beach. And the fact that we have our amazing fire department, police department, first responders, the City Council, our school board watching over us and in relationship with us and caring about us and having moments like this, we are able to see the blessings. So I just want to say a huge thank you to all of you who work tirelessly to make this city what it is. And we feel so blessed to be here. So thank you.
Jeremy Stern knows a bit about that, since Hildy Stern, former mayor, related.
Former first man of Manhattan Beach, right? And then Rabbi Yossi?
Thank you very much to the city. Thank you, Joe, the mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem, Richard, David, and Councilman Napolitano. I really appreciate it. I'm living in this city since 96, a part of the South Bay. And we've done tremendous things, and I have not been more proud to be a part of this community. And I say it proudly and openly that, living in this community, there's been acceptance, love, and really gave me the opportunity to raise my family and build the most amazing center here. And no coincidence that you had the CT3 Foundation. We put that on this week, this year, with Chris Taylor. Please God, he does better. A little prayer there. But, but we're grateful for this community. This community has been the forefront, specifically, that's really shining. I just spoke in Washington with the Secretary of Labor and the Secretary of Education about the Friendship Foundation. And I said, amazing where it all started, right here in Manhattan Beach. And now the world wants to see. And I'm grateful for everyone here that helped make this miracle happen. And I'm grateful for you recognizing Jewish Heritage Month. I'm a proud Jew. I'm here with my boys. And we're grateful to be in part of this community. So thank you so much. And many more happy years and joyous years to come with everyone here.[587.54][587.57](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Get a picture, hand up proclamations, and we'll do a picture.
Okay.
I like pictures. I'll get pinned.
All right, so, so we have a proclamation here. Whereas Jewish American Heritage, Jewish American Heritage Month is observed during the month of May to celebrate and pay tribute to the contribution of generations of Jewish Americans. I read that it went way back to 350 years. So, who have helped, who have helped weave the fabric of American history, culture, and society, and much more. So Rabbi, I want to present that to you. And Rabbi, to you as well.
Thank you.
Do you have one? All right, all right, guys. Okay, over here.
Take a picture, too, no?
Thank you.
The mayor's calling. The boys, come up here. You don't listen to me, you got to listen to the mayor.
There you go.
You don't get them in the picture.
But unfortunately, I'm not the higher power here. There you go.
Over here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And now someone stole my chair.
Did I, did I?
No, no, I'm just kidding.
It's great coffee. Good job.
All right. So continuing, we have an approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances, please. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Amy Homarth, and seconded by Councilmember Richard Montgomery.
What's this? I'm going to pull item seven, Your Honor.
Ah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So as amended?
Yep. I have one.
All right. And now, City Council and community organization announcements for upcoming events, please come forward.
Motion passes five zero.
Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to talk over you. You have one minute per person, please?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jill McCurry, and I work at Manhattan Village Shopping Center. And tonight, I'm representing the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I would like everyone to know that they are invited to our next mixer, which is open to the public. You can register on the Manhattan Beach Chamber website. And it's going to be at Culture Brewing, which is right here in downtown Manhattan Beach. It's going to be on Wednesday, June 12th, at 5:30. So just wanted to invite you all, and anyone is welcome to attend. Thank you. See you there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the community to our June 1st Summer Discovery Program kickoff from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Everyone is invited. The Friends of the Library will have, will be having a quarterly book sale in the meeting room from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Join us for a family-friendly bilingual musical performance by Byla Byla on the library lawn from 10:00 to 10:45. And the Library Commission will be hosting a photo opportunity from 11:30 to 1:30 p.m. at the Lightgate statue. There should be something for everyone at this event, so don't miss out on this exciting opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Josh.
Hello, my name is Brody Kelly, and this is Casey Kerniken. And we are ASP students that go to Costa. And we are here to inform you on what we have been doing at Maricosta. We are approaching the last few weeks of school, and everyone has just finished AP testing, and it went well. Over 2,000 tests were given. This week, AP late testing will be going on. This Thursday, we have the UCLA blood drive, and we'll hope to beat our record and have many people signed up. The blood drive will take place in the gym, and you don't need to be a member of Maricosta to attend. Parents and adults get to skip the lines. We also have our Prom a Starry Night coming up on Saturday, June 1st, at the Ronald Reagan Library. Over 800 kids have bought tickets, and we are excited for that. The prom will include food, as well as dancing karaoke, a casino, and a photo booth. This, the time of the dance will span from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., and we can't wait for everyone to come.
Great, thank you.
Although we have lost to Loyola twice, our volleyball team got second in CIF and second in state, which is a huge accomplishment. Today, we had an assembly during office hours for Asian American Pacific Islanders Month. The assembly included many different foods that are part of their culture, as well as a hula dancing show, and fun activities like writing calligraphy for prizes. Next Wednesday, we will also have a STEM night from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. in Athletic Complex. Tonight, at 7:00 p.m. in the Small Theater, the Drama Department is putting on what Costa likes to call the senior scenes. This is a fun production that seniors are, a part of Drama Department, put on, where they write indirect performances with other drama members. It's a very popular event to attend, and may many get a good laugh out of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. MB Safe, Manhattan Beach Safe Alternatives for Everyone, would like to invite the community to an evening of getting to better understand what we do and an evening of answering questions. This will be June 6th at Grunion's, at 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. And we'd like to invite the entire community to come and join us. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Rita.
Mayor Franklin, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, city officials, my name is Bobby Bell. I am the WM rep, recycling educator for the city of Manhattan Beach. I would be remiss if I didn't bring up, Ms. Amy reminded me, mid-May is Public Works Appreciation Week. And in my role, I have gotten to take a quick peek behind the black curtain to see just a little bit about what your Public Works guys and gals do. I'm here to share there the hardest working people I've ever seen. I had no idea what they do to keep the city safe, to keep it clean, and to keep it beautiful. So on behalf of WM and myself, thank you, Public Works, for giving me such a beautiful place to work. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask him, WM, what's WM stand for?
You do this every time.
Every time. Till you start getting it, I'm going to get it every time.
No, it's a rebranding of waste management.
There you go.
Okay, we are your franchise city hauler. Just bringing up this week, message 167, 166 more to go after today, that Memorial Day is coming up, your waste service will be postponed by a day. And Memorial, Memorial Day usually kicks off barbecue season. So just a reminder, all your barbecue, all your food, all your food trash, all your soiled napkins, paper towels, paper plates can all go into your green can, your organics can, your yard waste can, your green waste, whatever you want to call it. That's all I've got for tonight. Wish you guys a blessed evening. God bless.
Great, thank you, Bobby. Anybody else? Colleagues? George, you're motioning to somebody?
Yes, I assume.
Is it a?
It's a, no.
Is it a community announcement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it about the blood drive?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Christian Eichenlaw of your Police Captain in Manhattan Beach Police Department. So my purpose in being here tonight is to talk about e-bike safety and what we as a police department have been doing. I'm going to go over some stats to begin. First quarter of this year, we wrote approximately 132 citations from January to April. Those are e-bike citations, citations in general. Some of the other things we've been doing is, we've held a special operation on May 7th, which was a directed enforcement event where we invited cities to come and join us. We went out and conducted enforcement throughout the city. As the summer approaches, which is next month, we'll be deploying our bicycle patrol teams, which will go out there. We'll deploy them wherever we have problems, problem areas. They can help us out as well as that. You know, I want to comment on, there's a video that's been circulating throughout the papers in the South Bay. We all know what the video is. It's a depiction of a group of teenagers attacking another teenager. That's brought up a lot of discussion. I just want to be clear here. That did not occur in the city. It happened in another neighboring city. Our officers assisted in identifying the responsible party who was arrested and sent to juvenile hall. So, you know, I want to be clear with our message, Chief Johnson, the Police Department. It's very straightforward. We're maintaining a zero tolerance in dealing with any violence, any acts of violence committed against anyone in the city. Anybody who wants to surround another person, commit violence, they're going to have us to answer to. What we want to do is strike home the message to the parents, though, because we need some help with, with the parent involvement here. The conversation needs to take place at the dinner table. We need parents to help us out here and join this, this effort and tell their kids that we need their cooperation. We've done enforcement, we've done education, we've been in the schools, we held a bike safety event outside the Police Department here. We're done with warnings. So if you violate the law, if you're on an e-bike and you break any rules, you're going to be met with consequences. It's as simple as that. Not to bring this whole mood down in the room, but, which I think I've accomplished at this point. But that's, that's the, the aim here. And lastly, if you witness anything related to what I'm talking about, please don't go on social media and post it. Call us. We don't want to be responding to some next door post or something when, if you need help, you call us. Our non-emergency number, everyone probably knows it by now, but it's 310-545-4566. Or call 911 if you need emergency help. That concludes my update. Do you have any questions?
Colleagues, any questions?
I have one. Captain, you indicated there would be patrols beginning this summer on bikes. Did I hear you correct?
Correct.
Can you give just a general description of what that will entail?
So it's a two-wheeled vehicle with handlebars?
I deserve that.
Are they going to be e-bikes?
Good one.
I'm asking my colleagues, do we have any e-bikes at the department yet?
Surely you just...
I do.
They are equipped with a cool siren.
All right.
We, what we do is, we have officers who are designated to our high-risk areas or our problem areas. They ride bicycles. So they're these big fancy bikes. They wear shorts, polo shirts, helmets. We put them in residential neighborhoods, commercial districts. We put them wherever the problems are. And they also help with visibility. And then we can deploy them. They can get around a lot easier than a lot of the cars can. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the, you know, the report, or the update. Because it, you're right, summer's about to be upon us, and everyone's really concerned about everyone's safety. I think we got an email, you may not know the answer to this, but I want to, you know, put it out there. Somebody said, you, you got to stop these kids from right, riding the bikes. You shouldn't give them a license. But we don't have the ability to create licenses or not, right, in our city. Like, it's, they were, the email was like, you should not let them drive these, ride these bikes. But that we cannot pass a law that says they cannot, right? Is that, maybe I'm asking Quinn, but I don't want to put you on the spot.
The only thing I'll say is that there's some, some region, San Diego, I think, they're trying to create new laws that address that thing.
Okay.
In particular.
All right, well, great.
I'll leave it to him.
Yeah, it's something we looked at in December of last year, when the Council adopted the ordinance. And there's certain state regulations that regulate that. But there are cities been looking into permits.
Okay.
And some school districts have been looking into, you need a permit to come on to school property with an e-bike. So all the cities are dealing with this issue.
Great, thank you. There are tools.
And I think I would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the Council for our, your support. You helped us enact a, an ordinance last year, which led us in areas we couldn't ordinarily enforce, like the green belt, the sidewalk, parts of the strand, the speed limit. So thank you for that. We appreciate your support.
Mr. Mayor, we do have Chief Rachel Johnson on the Zoom call, and she raised her hand. She would like to provide some comments.
That means I'm in trouble right now.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, members of the City Council. I apologize for not being present today in person on the way to training conference. But to answer Mayor Pro Tem Hoer's question regarding licensing, we're not able to require licensing as a municipality. There was some legislation, Assembly Bill 2234, that's currently still making its way through the process that would have required the California Highway Patrol to provide a licensing scheme for children to be able to essentially take a written driving test and receive a license to operate e-bike. As amended right now, that the bill's currently been amended, and to only a pilot program in San Diego County, which will allow municipalities in San Diego County to prohibit the operation of e-bikes for persons under 12 years old. But that's a pilot program. It's still making its way through the legislative process. So there's no, at this time, there's no mechanism for us to, like, require licenses or even require bicycle licenses. But we continue to monitor the legislation that is out there. The CHP has put out some, a safety video that you can watch, that people can learn more about the rules in the road. But we continue to monitor that, and we'll be on the lookout for ways that we can support similar legislation in the future.
Thank you.
So, so Chief, it's Mayor Franklin. Could I ask you a question, please, about working with other cities? Since, since we're so close together with Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, and El Segundo, has there, has there been any outreach and effort to work together?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question, Mayor Franklin. One of the operations that Kevin Eichenlaw mentioned in his remarks was a joint operation for many South Bay agencies that happened a couple of weeks ago, where we had a bunch of agencies in our city to do some traffic enforcement. They were here for about half a day, and they wrote a significant number of citations. And so as they have come to our city, we'll go to theirs as well and conduct similar enforcement. And we will continue to do that throughout the year.
Okay, great, thank you. Colleagues, any questions?
I'm from Chief Johnson, but I'd like to comment when you're done, when she's done. She can listen if she wants to. My comment is that Assembly Bill 2234 that was mentioned earlier, it's not just about our permits or licensing or testing. Also the issue of age. Currently, the current law allows anyone from 0 to 99 to run an e-bike, to own an e-bike and drive an e-bike. So we're trying to change it. So I ask you all to contact our Assembly Member, Al Marasucci, and our Senator, Ben Allen, saying, this is enough. We need age, licensing, permits. Three things, common sense. Sacramento doesn't get it yet. So hopefully they're understanding, we should all go through this and let them all know that stop. Age, license, permits. Not even an eye exam. Nothing. So we want common sense to go back? I know with Sacramento, there's a chance, folks, they might just listen. But let them all know how serious we take it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem, you have a community announcement.
I have an announcement, but are there other comments or questions for?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Anything?
I mean, no.
Great. Well, thank you and all your officers, too. We really appreciate their work out there.
I actually thought that he was coming down to talk about the blood drive that's happening tomorrow, the Mark Vasquez Memorial Blood Drive. So I just wanted to mention that in case people are interested. It's up on our screen. Sponsored by the Vasquez family and our own Manhattan Beach Police Officers Association, taking place at Jocelyn Community Center, May 22nd, from 9:00 to 8:00. This is in honor of Police Officer Mark Vasquez, who's, excuse me, gosh.
Here, how's the Duncan Water?
Duncan Water. Who sadly passed away many years ago. But this has been going on for a long time. And he was a wonderful person and a member of our Police Department, and worked with the kids in our schools. My son, who's now just turned 29, actually was at the middle school when Mark was sick, and they created the Mark Vasquez Peace Garden to help him try to heal. So he's like, oh, gosh, I can go down tomorrow and give blood. So just want everyone to know. And please, please go give blood if you can. Thank you.
Yes, and you can use the Red Cross app if you're a frequent blood donor, you can, to make a reservation for a specific time. Let's see, colleagues, anything else? No, okay. So I also want to take this time to acknowledge any veterans of our military that might be here, because we want to recognize you. So any veterans, please stand up and And speaking of veterans, there's going to be a unique event down at the pier on Friday at 10:30 in the morning. I was approached by a nonprofit organization that is pinups for vets. And what it is, is it's a traditional type of pinup, but very, very benign, pinup calendar. But all the models are female veterans of all the different armed services. So they, this is their 20th edition that they're working on. So they this is their 20th edition that they're working on for 2025, and they want to do a beach theme. So we're going to be down at the pier, at the Plaza, which was formerly unobscured, except now we got we got the pier railing project going on. But from about 10:30 to 11:30, there'll be photos in a vintage car on the on the Pier Plaza, and then also down on the sand. So it's a unique a unique experience. And then certainly look for that calendar in 2025, because the money is donated to veterans' hospitals for rehabilitation equipment and also so that the so that the pinup veterans can visit veteran hospitals and and help increase morale. So it's a great project, and so show your support. So City Manager Mo, are we going to have an update on AB 2309?
Yes, we are. Mayor Gabriel will give a brief update on the.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Franklin and members of the City Council. George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. At the last council meeting, staff or council requested an update on Assembly Bill 2309, the legislation the City Council sponsored and supported, which authorizes the city's attorney of any general law or charter city to prosecute state misdemeanors. Since March, many steps have been taken, and that's when the last council action was on this item. And to ensure bill passage, most notably inconsistent with council direction, the city executed in agreement with ARC Strategies for lobbying services. Thereafter, staff worked with Assembly Member Merissucci's office to obtain the Assembly Public Safety Committee's support. On April 23, Mayor Franklin, as well as Police Chief Johnson, attended a Public Safety Committee meeting at the State Capitol in Sacramento, California, and received support from the Public Safety Committee by a vote of seven votes in favor, zero against. Thereafter, the bill received co-author support from Assembly Member Blanca Pacheco. And on May 13, the State Assembly voted by a margin of 50 in favor and six against to support bill passage of AB 2309. Currently, the bill is now awaiting committee's support from the State Senate, which must occur by early July. If the bill receives support from the committee in its current form, the bill will then go to a vote of the entire State Senate and then await gubernatorial consideration in September. As of now, the bill currently has support of the following organizations and cities: Los Angeles County Police Chiefs Association, the League of California Cities, City of Beverly Hills, City of Santa Clarita, City of Michoacan, City of Stanton, the South Bay Association of Chambers of Commerce, the City of Hermosa Beach, which actually just supported it last week, as well as the City of Gardena, which I just learned about, supported it last week. Supporters of the bill are still being sought out for, including the Independent Cities Association. And I think there has to be an official action by the Independent Cities Association to formally support the bill. But another another two other organizations the city's in contact with is the LA County Division of the League of California Cities, as well as the California Contract Cities Association. Efforts will continue, and as updates occur, staff will continue to update the City Council. And if you have any questions, I'm more than able to answer.
Any questions? I just personally want to thank my fellow council members for their outreach to other cities, to reach out to the Assembly to help get that vote. Councilmember Montgomery, I believe you spoke to several dozen.
Yeah.
Cities and also with all our attendance at several city conferences. So thank you very much.
And and for Assembly Member Merissucci for reaching out and, you know, agreeing to champion this, right?
Yes.
Your Honor, one comment. I'd say Georgia ICA, it's 43 cities across LA County, actually, and one in Orange County. But even more important, I appreciate Merissucci's office to get the first hurdle done. But we need to reach out to Ben Allen, or Senator Ben Allen. Every Senator you know, let them know in California, we want to have this done, push the next level. Fifty to six is a pretty good score, the next level. Well, now the Senate takes over. So once our senators hear from us, that's going forward, they need to actually hear from us email, whatever you want to call it, call them, text, get their numbers, let them know we want this bill to go through, because it affects everyone in California with an option. So not tell them they have to do it. It's an option. But for us, we want that option.
It should be noted that State Senator Ben Allen's office, when we were initially in the in the process of trying to get this bill introduced, we reached out to their office. They had they had conceptual support of the bill, and they said that, you know, whatever we needed, they would be there to assist us in any way. So hopefully that continues, especially as it goes to the State Senate.
Great. And thank you for your efforts, too, George. Appreciate it. Okay, so it's time for public comments. I just need to make a brief announcement. It's come to our attention that people have been disrupting City Council meetings in other cities with anti-Semitic or racially based comments through Zoom. Such comments are disruptive and interfere with the people's business and are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. I'm instructing the City Clerk's office to mute any speakers who attempt to disrupt the meeting with anti-Semitic or derogatory comments based upon race, gender, or other protected categories. So if you want to make your public comments, please come on down.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Can I speak now on an item on the agenda of the Council?
Right. Yeah, and then one other point, too, is that if you speak now during public comments about an item on the agenda, then you will not be allowed to make a public comment on that agenda item when it comes up. So it's just now or then. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. The topic of the MB Goons has recently become a popular surge within not only my school, Maricosta High School, but also in our community of Manhattan Beach in recent years. As part of an assignment in my AP European History class, four students, myself included, have undertaken the responsibility of addressing this communal problem that affects our campus and the broader community. We have observed a troubling trend of e-bike battery thefts, escalating vandalism with anti-Semitic undertones, and instances of assault perpetrated by these groups and other affiliated gangs. Such incidents have not only affected our peers, but also posed a threat to public safety, exemplified by recent assaults and a concerning surge in criminal activity. As reported by many local news outlets such as Easy Reader News, they posted on May 15, 2024, highlighting the 48 police reports taken in Manhattan Beach during the week of May 2 to May 8 regarding robbery, theft, and vandalism from these groups. Besides this account, in the same week, another report was made of an assault case from the Beach Life Music Festival on May 3, where these gangs of children attacked many civilians. These attacks included physical and sexual attacks, such as punching, kicking, and cat calling. One account from this night includes a man getting clocked from both sides and getting thrown on the ground violently. Within a single span of a week, there were 48 reports of these vile acts and cases of assault from these gangs. If we compile the data from the start of the new year, I believe we would have over a few thousand cases of theft and assault from these gangs. Despite previous attempts to enforce regulations, such as those pertaining to e-bike safety, made on September 7, 2023, these measures have proven ineffective in deterring the activities of these delinquent groups. It is evident that stricter enforcements and revised legislations are urgently required to curb these behaviors and ensure the well-being of our community. While we do not seek to vilify these youths or undermine the significance of friendships made within these groups, it is essential to hold individuals accountable for their actions, particularly when they endanger the safety of others. Moreover, the reckless disregard for traffic regulations and e-bike laws not only jeopardize public safety, but also places these individuals at risk of serious harm. E-bikes, originally intended as a mean of eco-friendly transportation, have unfortunately become co-opted now as symbols of dangers by these groups. It is imperative that we become decisive action to reclaim the integrity of our streets and safeguard the welfare of our citizens, particularly in our youth, for also this youth is our future. I implore the City Council and members of it to enact a comprehensive measure aimed at addressing the root causes of these issues and bolstering existing regulations to prevent further instances of criminal behavior. By doing so, we can foster a safer and more secure environment for all members of our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Well done.
I must have missed the first part of the meeting.
I mean, well said, well done. Thank you very much. An example for the adults in the room, because it's pretty embarrassing what I feel like I'm seeing going on by these kids. They're embarrassing us as a community, as adults, and and we keep letting it go on. I had an incident with them. My husband had two incidents with them. I shouldn't know these kids. I probably shouldn't know any of your kids. I don't have kids, so I'm not in the schools. I'm not at the same things you guys all are. I shouldn't know your children. I shouldn't know these kids. I recognize that most of them are not from our community, or not all of them are from our community, but they're in our community, and they're doing things inside this community. I also am a little confused about the e-bike classification, because a lot of these kids are not just riding normal e-bikes. So I do feel like I would love some education on if these e-bikes that we're talking about, if there are different classifications and different things that our policemen have access to, to be able to enforce, not just, you know, no, we can't have licenses, no, we can't make them do anything. Because all I keep hearing from anyone that has engaged with these kids and then come to the police is there is nothing we can do. So would love to know what what is available to our police department and to us as citizens to be able to stop allowing them to embarrass us, quite frankly. And I don't know if half of you or any of you have researched these kids and their families and seen what they post on their TikTok and their Instagram. I've gone down a rabbit hole, and it's really embarrassing. And I would say for the policemen, it's really sad that we're allowing this to go on and for them to be viewed this way. 20,000 views on a kid's on a kid's TikTok being chased by cops. It's pretty embarrassing. So if there are things that we can do or things as a community that we can help, would love to know what those things are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I can I make a there's a clarification to make?
Okay, sure.
Does this start when I start talking? With your name?
All right. We'll give you about three minutes.
Hold on two seconds, Bob. I was going to make a clarification or comment, sorry, to the woman who just spoke, because there are different kinds of e-bikes or bikes. And there's, I think what you're referring to is a kind of bike that's actually sort of a dirt bike that no one is allowed to ride on a street, doesn't matter your age. And then when the police are able to, they do confiscate those bikes. So that, I mean, we've talked about that before, but just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Sure. And I believe, did I see on the calendar, City Manager Mo?
On the website.
A a police, Manhattan Beach Police Town Hall coming up sometime.
Let me get you that date, but there is an event coming up. And as Captain Ikenlog did point out, we have issued 130-some odd sites mainly to e-bikes recently. So we are doing something.
Yeah. And then also, too, I've been involved a lot with the education efforts, and it's it's the kids, it's not necessarily the e-bikes. They're riding e-bikes, but still, it's the bad behaviors coming from the kids. So I don't really want to banish e-bikes. But we need to really focus in on those behaviors and also to get their parents involved as well with rectifying those behaviors. Okay, go ahead.
Maybe we should just banish kids. I'm sorry. Hi, good evening, Mayor Franklin and members of the City Council. I'm Bob Seemack, and I live at 2204 Elm Avenue. And I'm here to talk about Item 13, which is the recommendation by the Planning and Public Improvements Parking, Public Improvements Committee to install a stop sign on the corner of 19th and Elm. I've lived on Elm Avenue for 39 years, and I've seen the, I don't want to say slow deterioration, of the traffic on 19th. And they're zooming down there, and there's no stop sign on 19th. And through the efforts of of our community, our street, which was spearheaded by a petition by my lovely wife, Melita, and Tracy Hahn, and and other members, we we got that the traffic engineer to do a study, and and I think it went in in front of the Parking Committee for recommendation for approval. So I'm here to support that recommendation. And I'd like to kind of put a little historical perspective on why this condition has occurred. And what happened probably 15 years ago, there was a no-left-turn sign on northbound Sepulveda onto 19th, right by the synagogue there. And that sign was, I think it was destroyed by a traffic accident, and Caltrans never replaced it. And so people now find an easy way. Instead of going to Marine, which tends to get congested, they go to 19th. So I think the the stop sign at 19th and Elm would alleviate that condition. And finally, I am was pleasantly surprised and really proud that yesterday evening, I got a knock on my door from Mayor Franklin, who was distributing a flyer for the community, for the neighborhood to address this issue at City Council, and that's why I'm here. I did send in at least three emails to to Montgomery, because he likes emails.
We all like emails.
But to you all, supporting that. And this is what really municipal government is about, it's participating, involvement, and finally, action on your part. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Your Honor. Okay, yes, so up there, right? Hello.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, addressing the issue with these kids. As my wife had mentioned, I had my issue in the Manhattan Beach public bathroom between the pier and the 90210 house. I was in there, and they came, while I was going to the bathroom, came in there and started harassing me. Fortunately, there was somebody else in there, so they didn't physically assault me. But after that happened, I knew that something bad is going to happen very soon if this issue is not addressed. Couple days later, they harassed my wife. Then a couple days later, they beat up that kid on that video that we've all seen. Then a couple days later, they knocked the woman off her bike going to Beach Life. They're throwing ice cubes at people on their bikes. So if this issue is not addressed, and I get the e-bike thing, like, the e-bike is an issue, but as you had said, it's more about the kids. I don't want something bad to happen. Like, it took me everything I had in me not to lose it on these kids when they came and started harassing me. I'm not going to say what they said to me, but it was brutal.
It would be a hate crime or something.
So I just something, I just don't want something bad to happen, whether these kids really, really injure somebody. Like, when I saw that video of them beating that kid to the kicking the kid on the ground, punching him on the ground, like, who knows what could have happened? They could have killed that kid. And I get it, it's not Manhattan Beach, might have been over the border in Hermosa Beach, but it's going to happen here in Manhattan Beach if we don't do something about it. And I really appreciate the fact that you said, let's get all the cities to start talking about it together, because we're all one big community. Hermosa, Manhattan, Redondo, it's one big community, and we got to figure out a way to stop this. The e-bikes is an issue, because they can do these things and then just take off, and the cops can't catch them, because they can just weave in and out of all the streets and get away, and it's impossible to catch. Because they modify these e-bikes to go 40, 50 miles an hour, and it's just can't catch them. And if these kids are willing to do these things to people, it's it's an issue. And I just really hope you guys all start start taking it more seriously, because I've talked to probably 30 parents since, you know, I experienced this first thing a couple weeks ago. And it hasn't been going on for weeks. It's been going on for years now. So the fact that nothing has been done, really, and I don't know what the answer is, but the parents need to be held accountable, these kids need to be held accountable, and as a community, we need to get together and figure out what to do before one of these kids gets hurt and one of the parents gets hurt. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my comment actually today is about something that happened at Meadows Elementary School yesterday or day before. There was a lady who was walking around, I think she was homeless. She was walking around Meadows Elementary School, and she was talking to herself. She was right at the front of the playground, at the fence, at the gate, where kids were playing during recess time. First, maybe think she's just talking on her phone, but it turns out she's talking to herself. But what was really alarming is she had a syringe. And I live right across the street from the school, so my kid, every time I syringe. And I live right across the street from the school. So my kid, every time I go by, she always comes out right to the fence. And so that was really alarming, that this person was there. My neighbor called it into the police. They came out very quickly. Only problem is, her description included this woman having a blue blanket, and she had dropped it at some point. So they zip by her a couple times, but we flagged them down and everything was good. I think they arrested her. One of the, I wanted the community to be aware of this situation that happened. I'm not on Nextdoor or Facebook. So that's one thing, is just letting you know that this happened right in my backyard during recess time when my kid was out there. But also, I was, the neighbor and I, we were all frantically calling the school to let them know, you got to, there's this woman walking around with a syringe right in front of the kids. And we couldn't get a hold of anybody. It went to voicemail, not once, not twice, but three times. And I obviously just ran over there to the office to alert them. But there should never be a situation where a parent cannot, calls the school where their child is at and can't get a hold of a live person. I think the school phone systems need to be updated. And same thing at the city. A live person should always answer the phone. And it wasn't until this emergency happened that I realized how important, how important that is. So we need to, I don't know, do something about that. Also, about the MB goons and stuff, you know, we've encountered them multiple times shoplifting at our store. And I'm just surprised that nothing has really been done, you know, as well. Back in the day, I used to grab them by the ear, take them to the back room and scare them a little bit. And can't do that anymore. But it seems like nobody's doing anything. And so, you know, this is really disappointing to hear what's been going on in our community and that it's been allowed to go on for this long. And I'm just so sorry to anybody who's a victim of these kids. And the parents need to be held responsible. The parents know who their kids are. And I hope that there is some, that we can shame them enough to, for somebody to do something about this. Thank you.
Great.
You can speak at the end, Your Honor.
Yeah. And if you are getting ready, come on, yeah, come on down. You can take some chairs here. Scott, just a second. Also, if you see anything, please report it to the police. The non-emergency number is 310-545-4566. Or you can always dial 911. There's someone there 24 hours a day.
A live person?
Yeah. So please, before you do anything yourselves, just go ahead and call that number and let them know. There's also, the city has an application. It's called Reach Manhattan Beach. And you can do all sorts of things with that, from reporting graffiti to potholes. But also, you can also call for homeless outreach to any individual that you might see that might need some help. And there's some postcards on the table right as you come in that explains that application and gives you a QR code that you can go ahead and put your camera on, and it will take you right to the website in order to install it on your phone. Okay? Thank you, Scott.
Hello. My name is Scott Janofsky. First of all, I want to thank you for acknowledging the Jewish community. I think that's a great thing for you guys to do. Also, I was here last time, I'm going to keep coming back and mentioning it, so everyone keeps it in their head, the 9/11 memorial at the corner here, which I built, was defaced the other day. They're trying to peel off the copper, the brass panels on there. And if anyone in the community sees people hanging around there, just please call 911. I mean, the guts that someone has to do in front of the police and fire station is amazing to me. I'm going to work, Councilman Lesser made some suggestions on how to correct that and protect it. But I'd like to see if the community, more people can protect that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Kaminsky, resident, and I live at 1710 Oak Avenue, or 1701 Oak Avenue, on the corner, around the very corner. As a former school principal for 34 years, and currently a school leadership coach for the Los Angeles County Office of Education, safety, sort of paramount, safety of our students, our teachers and parents, very, very important. I moved in in 2017, the corner of Oak and 17th. And I've observed accidents, near accidents, from my living room window or my front yard. And I've observed parents, young parents, and devoted grandparents walking their children out to school, down to the local elementary school, very gingerly because of the traffic. And therefore, I would like to advocate, as many of our neighbors have, propose four-way stop by Oak and 17th, as well as Elm and 17th. Because the cars come speeding up to get to Sepulveda in the morning. And fast, going to work, I guess. But it's kind of dangerous there. And also, they accelerate excessively going downhill through Elm and 17. My neighbor said, Missy, who's lived there since 1952, and close to the corner, that 17th Avenue was a shortcut to get to downtown, to City Hall, to the beach, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it causes a lot of speeding traffic. So in conclusion, I trust that the city council will support our neighborhood concerns about safety. Safety over inconvenience. Thank you, council members. And I trust and I'm hoping that you will make us feel valued, cared for, and understood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I'm reminded that there's no applause during public comments. I apologize about that. You could applaud that.
Did you say that just because I was coming up here?
The last one.
The applause is deafening.
Mr. Medalist, members of council, Honorable Mayor, thank you. I'm heartbroken on the e-bike stories. I know, Councilor, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Franklin and I, for a long time, I appreciate your champion on the e-bike safety. Yanni, I'm heartbroken to hear his story. And pleased to hear the police officers doing citations, doing some enforcement. I think it's long overdue, but I think there was some education that needed to happen. I think the city has done a lot thus far on this issue, but obviously, there's a long way to go. I've been out of town for the last several weeks and have missed, I haven't seen any videos, have missed a lot. But certainly on our Walk Street, bikes flying by at 30, 40 miles an hour, easy, and then going right into Crest without stopping. And the number of near misses is why someone hasn't been hurt to date is we are fortunate. Maybe the rabbis' prayers have kept us, the miracle. Anyway, that's not, that's not why I came down to speak. I'm here tonight, I wanted to talk, one of the items on the consent calendar was item number seven, our parking study with Walker and Associates. And it says it's a citywide, or city planning, it looks to me just north end and the commercial and downtown, more of the commercial districts, largely to look at utilizing or optimizing some of the underutilized parking spaces, maybe for more of the outdoor dining issues. But I'm heartened that in the scope of work, the residence issues are highlighted. And I think that's a great idea. I think the residents here in downtown with the intensification of use, there's a lot, I think there's a lot of residential parking issues that need to be addressed, that can be studied. I'm discouraged that we're spending $250,000. And I thought that as part of the MIG study that we had paid for, that there was a parking study and component with that. I can remember being on Morningside and seeing the guys go around in parking. I've never seen the results of that study. And here we're about to spend another $250,000 for something else. I like the idea that it's going to include some residential issues, but I'd also like to make sure that we actually get results out of this. And that it's not just a, hey, let's do this so we can satisfy some secret requirement or something. And let's optimize everything so we get Coastal Commission approval. But it's actually something that's going to be utilized, that's going to be helpful, and it's going to give us information, and we're going to see results. I've run out of time. I was complimenting everybody. But anyway, that's what I've got. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anybody else? Seeing none in chambers? How about online?
There's no request on Zoom.
I've got one.
The neck of time.
Sorry about that. Hello, Mr. Franklin, Mayor Franklin, council members. Mr. Montgomery, I've seen you in a long time.
You too.
The reason I'm here is that I was going to be silent, but I've been sitting idle for a long time here. And my son goes to school here at Manhattan Beach Middle School. And him and I have very frank conversations about what goes on. He's very honest, he's very open with me about what's going on. And we've talked countless times the last couple of years about all this activity going on with kids with bad behavior up and down the coastline. El Segundo, Hermosa, Redondo, Manhattan. And I said, River, never allow your possessions to be overtaken by anger or fear. Just walk away from it. Just give it up. But time and time again, he's aware of all these people that are doing this. It's happening to his classmates. It's happening to people all up and down, middle school and Miracoast High School. And I ask him, I says, if all these kids know what's going on, and everybody knows who is the perpetrator, these kids are embellishing that noriety, that publicity, that popularity. You can see this on videos. You see it on TikTok. And I'm wondering, as I'm sitting here, I've experienced it a couple of times. I had a good friend that was accosted and assaulted on the beach, who happened to be an attorney in Hermosa Beach. And I would think that there would be some incredible attention to that. Nothing short of, how can we basically offer any kind of child or support with the community and with the parents? There's got to be accountability for these kids, not only for their kids, but for their parents. And you tie this to the school. You know, I come from Colorado. And if we had acts of bad behavior, we'd be suspended. We'd be kicked out of school. We'd have accountability. Our parents would be accountable. So I offer whatever I can do to assist in this because as a parent, and as a resident of Manhattan Beach, a very proud resident of Manhattan Beach, this can't exist. It's been going on for year after year after year. And here he is, getting up there, out of middle school, going into high school, and the acts of violence will increase. And they have increased. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
I'll jump in. I'm a little late to the party. I just showed up. But I heard from my wife, this was about the kids around the beach area. I didn't prepare anything. I'm speaking from my heart. So I'm a product of Manhattan Beach. I'm a product of the school system here. I probably know a lot of these people. I know Steve from growing up volleyball courts. I want to echo what my friend out here from Colorado said about accountability. I think it's imperative that these kids be accountable, or the parents. Usually, we just kind of blow it off. But this has gone on time and time again. Happened to me and my wife personally, a couple weeks ago. We're coming back from dinner right down here, driving up by American Martyrs, pack of the kids, probably 10 or 15 on the e-bikes, and not, kind of surrounded the car as I was driving up. I was like, what's going on? I don't get this. And, you know, they kind of, they're being kids. And I get it. It's Friday night and you're kids. I said, hey, slow down. And they called names. And then they kind of surrounded the car. And they go, what's your problem? And he popped my window, and he popped my mirror on the car, scared my wife. And my blood pressure just went skyrocket. So I opened the car door. All right, that's a bad idea. What am I doing? Slow down. I cannot do this. But got the better of me. And I just, you know, said something to the kid. And they weren't running. And then one kid said, hey, I'm sorry. That's not, you know, that's not, that's not me. You're a good kid, but you had to tell your friend that, you know, somebody's going to get hurt. So, by somebody. So anyway, I don't want to drag it on. I just want to be, my voice is heard from my town that I grew up in. And accountability should be absolutely done. So that's it. This is my word.
All the way through.
Is this being recorded?
Yes.
All the way through.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments? No chambers? No? How about?
If I were to make a comment, would I also speak in a public hearing?
Well, if the subject is about something that's an item later on, you can choose one or the other.
No, it's not the same subject.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Public comments are about anything? We could also bring a microphone to your chair.
Larry Greck, I live at 2701 Manhattan Avenue. And just following up on what the last two gentlemen were talking about, we were coming home from an Angels game, I think it was the day after Thanksgiving. And we're coming down Manhattan Avenue, and we're getting down near Bruce's Beach. And my daughter's driving. I had had a couple beers at the game. So her daughter is sitting alongside of her and says, look out, he's got a gun. And the car in front of us, a Beamer, has a driver and a kid hanging out the passenger side window with a gun, with a rifle. Long story short, the police do get them. And it's not a, it's not a gun-gun, but it's, there's some gun similar to a paintball gun, but whatever. But now, it's almost dark. So anyway, the two fathers get called to come pick up their kids. The fathers are laughing the hell out of it. They thought it was the funniest thing that had happened that day. And I suppose nothing happened to them. One other comment about e-bikes, I've never heard it mentioned. Here you have a bike that has a battery in it. And most e-bikes do not have headlights and taillights.
Not recorded.
Be the easiest vehicle. An e-bike shouldn't be allowed to be sold or rented until it had front and back taillights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? How about online, Martha? Anybody on Zoom?
Nobody else.
Okay. So we're going to close public comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the Town Hall meeting with the police department is on Wednesday, June 26, 6:00 PM at the Jocelyn Center.
Can I make one comment about this?
Oh, yes. Yeah, Councilmember.
Just, I'm disappointed in some of the comments here. Some of you called the police. We've heard the stories. That's good. Always call the police. Others do not. They'd rather post it and get credit for posting on Nextdoor or Facebook that actually called the police. So that's excuse number one. Excuse number two, someone throws out numbers, 1,000 calls a month in five months. That's 200, 200.
For sure.
200 calls unheard of for our police. And second, the fact that our police can't do anything. I never heard our police ever say that, that they can't do anything. So if you hear that, I want to hear that. Let council, we're hearing that. We've not heard that from anyone, hard to believe. But if you do hear that, let us know. You ever sell numbers and email, call us. I've never heard that before in my life, especially stopping as mayor than the e-bike czar since December of last year. I know, I was here. So you've seen a step up in enforcement. So I don't believe that, A, we're not doing a good job with it. But B, that people are sitting out there in helmets. How many people have ridden out in helmets that you don't see in December of last year? You see a marked increase in ridership of helmets. I'm not looking at behavior, talking about wearing a helmet. Now, the next step is that constant enforcement that I know they're doing behind me, as the mayor mentioned, all of us in the South Bay riding together, enforcement with our PD together, it's chipping away, folks. It isn't, not going to happen overnight. But part of that job is let us know what things you see, tell us about it. Or hear, tell us about it. Not running Nextdoor and social media. That's the last place we're getting enforcement from. Thank you, Your Honor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery. Mayor approach in? Mayor Procham?
Thank you. Sorry, Steve. I'd whispered in, I'd whispered in the mayor's ear that I wanted to make a comment. Just, anyway. Yes, and it's really important that people came to speak to us tonight and that we hear them. Because it's not about, I have seen a lot more helmets, which is great. And I, you know, your efforts, Mr. Mayor, and the police are making so many more citations on all of that. But I actually don't feel that safe. Like, and I live in, you know, such a safe place. Whenever I see more than two kids on an e-bike riding, zooming around, I get really nervous. I am nervous. I used to, you know, walk around a lot at, you know, night. I'm nervous now to do that. I have been on the street in Hermosa, but like, I don't know, one foot was in Hermosa, one foot was in Manhattan. And 20 kids on e-bikes bikes came riding down PCH, but then also up onto the sidewalk. Right? So there's, there is something happening, you know, and we have to be aware. And I know that our police are aware. And I know that we're all trying to figure out whether there's laws, whether there's this, what we can do. But I, and I agree with my colleague, it's not okay, or it's, I get putting on Nextdoor, but that's not the same as calling the police and et cetera. So it is, it is a problem, and I share the concern. It's very concerning, so.
Thank you. And if I may just make a comment as well, is with the support of council here and also the school district, in the past year, we have presented e-bike safety and e-bike rules of the road training specifically targeted at that, at that age group. At, and we've educated 6,000 students in the last year. And that also includes an effort at the Hometown Fair. We reached, reached out to 900 students there. And we've also worked with the Junior Guard Program. And we educated 2,500 students there because those students are riding their e-bikes. You've got more good kids than bad. One thing that you all can do is encourage those, that good behavior. Great, great way to wear your helmet. Nice stop there. I'm seeing kids now starting to signal, using the hand signals like we've talked to them about. So do your part. Compliment the good behavior and report the bad behavior. And we'll all do this together as a community and make it safer for everyone.
Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Napolitano.
You had whispered.
Was your name there for a while? Yeah. Sorry.
Forget myself sometimes. Yes and no on the e-bike thing. I think, you know, a good part of the forum should be on that, if not, putting out some statements early. Because I disagree with a couple of things. Education is one thing, but we're educating them on being good riders by riding their, wearing their helmet and stopping at stop signs. Great. That's not what people are concerned about tonight. They're not bringing issues about the kids not stopping at stop signs. At a certain point, that's assumption of the risk, and they're risking their own lives if they go through that, and that's too bad. But, you know, we're not hearing about those folks. We're hearing about the kids who are being jerks, whether they're on e-bikes or not. It just happens that e-bikes allow them to gain proximity to folks and then leave very quickly after being jerks. And that's a nice way of putting it. So, but I do, you know, in terms of posting on social media and stuff like that, that's because it's being done in the moment. They're capturing on camera because no one else is there, because the police aren't there. And I've heard more than once, I'd be happy to hear some clarification on this by either Captain Iklab or if the chief's still watching and not hitting the conference right now, is, you know, we've understood in the past, though, you have to witness something happening before you can do something about it. Our police do. If they do not see it, they can't follow up on postings and social media and things like that. Someone take a video, they can have a clear shot of a picture, and that'd make great evidence, except that in a lot of instances we've heard in the past, again, correct me if I'm wrong, unless the police officer sees it, they can't go and arrest someone after the fact for it. And so that's annoying people as well. And so it does come down to public shaming for some folks to get any action of it because obviously, we don't have cops on every street corner. They're not seeing everything. There might be out on other higher priority calls, and they're not lying in wait for kids on e-bikes to be circling around people. So maybe we can get some clarification on that right now. Do you have to witness it in order to make an arrest, to do anything about it?
Yes.
Right. That's a very, very narrow window. So unless there are changes in the laws that allow us to go beyond a police officer actually witnessing something, this is going to continue to happen. And so that's why you're seeing the shaming and blaming, because they can't. They can't see at all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Napolitano. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve items three through 11 with the exception of item number seven?
With the exception of item number seven, I've so moved.
Okay, so we have moved by Councilmember Lesser and seconded by Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes, sir.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. So discussing number seven, Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I pulled this item. This is consideration, Mr. Burton knows, consideration of a resolution approving an agreement with Walker Consultants for a city parking management study in an amount not to exceed 249,970. I'm not sure how we came up with that number as opposed to just rounding up 250,000. I guess that always sounds better psychologically, but not to me. $250,000 to 250,000. I have gone, I've been part of these before, the studies in the past, 1984, 1990, 1998, 2008. Those were when the official studies are done. I know that we've done a number of studies in between, though. We did studies and we did, we did a survey of our parking spots in the downtown North End. We've done them in regards to some of the things in the outdoor dining and other things in between. And I would challenge anybody here to tell me what has come out of these studies, except that we know how many parking spaces we have, just like we knew in 2008, just like we knew in 2000, 1998, and everything else. And the idea that we're going, I'm sorry, if any consultants are here who delve in parking, because I'm going to just say that I don't think it's a science. I think that, you know, the stuff that we're looking at here are things that either we can get pretty easily off the internet as far as parking management best practices, and the rest of it is, well, how does it apply to Manhattan Beach? I think we know our parking. I think our downtown businesses and North End businesses know our parking. When I see things like determine opportunities for new parking facilities, shared parking, public-private partnerships, this is stuff we've seen before. This is a road we've gone down before. We had, before, we had shared public-private parking with a valet system. Well, the city didn't want to run that and take on the liability. That downtown did. Downtown gave it up. Are we going to take that over again? You know, is that going to be a suggestion here? I don't want to see it because that's a waste of time and money for us because we've gone through that already. New parking facilities? Tell me where we're going to have new parking facilities. If we don't know ourselves, a consultant isn't going to tell us. We don't have any more room in downtown for new parking facilities unless we tear something down that's already existing to put something in. I don't see the value in this. I see that if we want to know, I don't know if we're checking some box for, as was said, sequel or something else, but 250,000, it was much more before we narrowed it down. Started off as a million with one company and 500,000 for another. What can we possibly get for, I don't want to hear that, yes, if we get into an agreement with Northrop Brumman, we can shuttle folks from there to our downtown. We've already experienced and know that the cost of a shuttle is a million dollars. We're not going to be funding a million-dollar shuttle to get people downtown North End from Northrop Brumman parking lot. So what are they going to tell us that we don't already know?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm Eric Zanvile, the City Traffic Engineer. It has been 15 years since we've done the last downtown parking study. This study will include both the downtown area and the El Portal area, both areas of concern, perpetual concern for us in the, in the city. These are our hot items with regard to parking. There are new technologies that did not exist 15 years ago. We have new modes of travel that didn't exist 15 years ago, including Uber, Lyft, the shared parking concepts, the shared ridership, different kinds of shuttles, e-bikes, e-vehicles, and all the rest. There are a lot of things that we don't know, and that's why we are asking for this. They will provide us strategies. They'll give us new ideas. There will be an accounting for what our future parking needs will be. We don't know that. They will look at all of our public parking. They'll look at all of our land uses and see where it best fits the types of parking that we will need. It'll address the loading zone issues that we have in downtown. It'll address the parking shortage that we have in the North End. It will right-size our parking. It will also tell us how best to use the parking that we do have. There may be opportunities for.
For instance, the North End, how is it going to solve our problems there? Unless they're building parking for us there, there's so many spaces, there's so much room, there's only so many places you can put cars. How are they going to solve our problems up there?
Well, that's not necessarily true. There will be a lot of outreach to the business community about what they would like to see and where they might be able to find some parking. When High Rose is done, there's a huge parking lot behind that that we could actually take advantage of. It will not be used for the verandas anymore, and the condos won't need it. So that's, that's an opportunity site.
They have an agreement right now with verandas, with the High Rose.
Only for construction purposes.
Okay. All right.
15 years ago, the parking study, the 2008 parking study for the downtown only was about $80,000. This will include both the North End and the downtown area. Prices have gone up. The hourly rates are very high, and that's why it's $250,000. We worked hard with the negotiations to try to bring it down from $500,000. We shaved off three parking, three down, three areas of the city that we don't feel that we, that we actually feel that we could actually handle ourselves. And so we are bringing this cost down. We're not including the Rosecrans Parkview area. We're not including the Manhattan Beach Boulevard corridor. And we're not including the Sepulveda Boulevard corridor. We're also not including parking studies that are in the private parking lots. And so we're mainly focusing on our public parking areas and putting this public money towards those public parking areas.
Okay. So questions, council?
Yeah.
Mayor Procham? Howard?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I appreciate my colleagues' questions because of, you know, the amount, the dollar amount. And we do have to be responsible in how we spend it. One of our residents brought up, you know, the MIG study wasn't that supposed to include this, but my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, was that was about traffic patterns more than parking? No? That was?
No, there's a small amount of the MIG full study for the downtown area for outdoor dining purposes. And so that is to.
But for parking, there's parking.
Look for parking opportunities for, for outdoor dining and to help replace anything that's lost for that.
Okay. And so, and have any, the park, I know that in other areas of town, parking requirements have changed. So like, it used to be if you'd put in a business, you need to have X amount of parking spaces that were X inches or feet wide. That's changed since the last time we've built lots and done studies, correct?
That's correct. And that's one of our work plan items that we're working on right now. We'll be bringing that to our commissions this springtime or in June to right-size again also, as you mentioned, the parking size spaces, our parking code with regard to what, how many parking spaces are needed or required for each types of land use. So this will dovetail into that.
So this will be part of that. And then the, you mentioned the loading zones. And this is something that really has been so complicated to try to fix for the residents downtown and impacts, it's come up in outdoor dining because, you know. So how, how is this study going to, do you think, address, try to figure that out? Like?
Right. So one of the tasks that we've been asking, we will ask them to do, is to look at our curbside management. And so that's the street side. What times of the day are the best times for loading? What times are the best day for short-term parking, long-term parking? We can get creative on the use of the parking space. It doesn't always have to be just two-hour parking.
That's great. One last question, if I may. Will this also be, this group will be tasked with looking at, I know, like Parking Lot 3, we've all talked about, it's probably passed its useful life. Is that going to be part of this? Will there be public outreach regarding the actual structure? Or will it only be looking, will they be looking at the, you know, the spaces themselves or how many we need, et cetera?
We are not asking them to take a look at the design of Lot 3 or what the possibilities for Lot 3 would be. But we have asked them that they need to work with what is coming out of that study and find out how that can be used.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Eric, just confirm, the study's not tied to outdoor dining, it just overlap, correct? They're not really tied to each other in any way?
Correct. They're not, they're not overlapping, but they will help, help complement it.
Okay.
The data from the outdoor dining MIG study will come in first, and then this Walker Consultants will take that information and see where we can, where we can implement it.
I understand we're 15 years late to, since our last study. And all the world has changed.
About 10 years late. Sorry, about five years late.
Five years late to it. So they'll look at everything from EV parking, charging stalls, everything.
Correct. Handicap parking, small EV spaces.
Tim Burton's favorite, curbside management. All that will be included in one wrap-up. They'll do it all for us at one time.
Yeah. A lot of the task is a lot of outreach, and that we don't have that kind of time to do that kind of outreach to all of our businesses and our residents and get their input. So that's, that's a large part of this.
Thank you. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lesser.
Eric, is there any legal basis for updating our parking survey or any basis for doing so to be eligible for grants? Might that be a rationale for having an updated?
Strictly speaking, there aren't, there isn't a legal requirement or a mandate that you have to do a parking study or a parking management study. But the results of what come out of it, the strategies, the outreach that has, comes out of it, could be eligible for a grant if you, because you've done the outreach, you can, you can apply for grants to implement it.
Let's say hypothetically that council does not approve going forward with the study. What resources would staff look to to try and come up with a more updated plan, as was suggested by Councilmember Napolitano?
We would have to take it in a much smaller and a drawn-out manner. We could only do a small amount of what we would want to do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Eric, we, well, one of my ideas, I came up a long time ago with, because we bought a smart car, is to do perpendicular parking where there's parallel. Because you can fit three smart cars or small-profile cars in a regular parking space. So would something like that be analyzed in this plan?
It very well could be. The challenge I see is that how do you get the parking meter to work for two half-spaces? But it could be overcome. Because if you're using an app for your parking, you don't need to use the parking meter.
Right. Okay. So I was being a little facetious, but also, that's a great way to utilize parking spaces. We just went through, you know, the commissions, you know, nominating people for commissions. And we've talked many times about how many talented people there are here in Manhattan Beach. They've had great jobs in engineering. They've had great jobs. Even one was the Loyola Marymount University Facilities EVP. And she was in charge of 3,000 parking spaces. I mean, it just seems to me that we, as an interim step, to save the money, but also because you're a local and you kind of understand what the challenges are, is to tap into that. You know, use our PPIC, use ad hoc committees to do these kinds of studies. And I just think that because they're so familiar with our challenges and end opportunities, that maybe that might be considered an interim step before we go and spend $250,000.
The person you mentioned is on our PPIC, and they will be an integral part of making sure we're doing the right thing with this study. They will be reviewing it. They'll be making comments on it. They'll be involved in the process.
But can they actually, maybe as, again, as an interim step, is it feasible that persons such as who we just talked about? And there were others that there wasn't enough space on the PPIC, someone that worked in other cities in parking management and things like that.
At a certain point, I believe that we are unique enough, and there's some special challenges that are in, especially our downtown and our North End, that are not common to any other place, whether it's a university or another city.
Okay. So if, but in case you did get direction from this council to try something like that, is it something that can be managed and, you know, is feasible and valuable?
It could be. And I'll offer this, is that this is a not-to-exceed contract. And if there are tasks that we feel that we can do ourselves or that we can take on with expert help from our locals, we can remove that from the work of the consultant.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Eric, just a follow-up question. On their staff report, I'm not sure it's your answer, Eric, or maybe to the manager, Mo. It says, "A study funded through the City, County, and State Parking Fund Programs." It's not general fund money. We're using parking fund, dedicated money. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser.
Another follow-up on the second-to-last comment you made, and that is, if council is concerned about the cost of this, are there ways to reduce the scope? And if we did, would you have to go back out to bid? You just indicated not to exceed. Or could council give staff direction that we have a certain cap for the amount that we're willing to spend on this type of study?
What I would say is that I would like to see that we issue a contract because we are at the end of the fiscal year, and that's, this is the fiscal year that we are authorized for the budget or to extend it to the following year, that the city council would have to do that. We can return with a reduced scope if that's the direction of the city council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you. So the parking money, can that not be used for anything else but this study?
I'm sure we can. The parking fund is used for many different things.
Exactly. And so if we wanted to, say, take down the meters and put in kiosks, the money could go to that. The money could go to lots of different things. In fact, there's no restriction, for instance, on the meter money, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. And we open up to public comment. So anybody here want to comment on this?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. I didn't do a lot of research on this. I'm just listening to this conversation tonight. And it seems like we're having a little misunderstanding about the value proposition. What I mean by that is, I'd love to be able to see a point list of what are the deliverables coming out of this study and to say, is that worth $250,000? We've talked about it, but boy, it would really be nice to have a bullet point list of what that is so we can all sit there and go, yeah, that's worth 250 grand, okay? The second item here, that's something that's been on my mind through a lot of these meetings, is this not-to-exceed. In the business world, I never, ever wrote a not-to-exceed contract. It was always a fixed price for a fixed scope. When I hear not-to-exceed, that sounds like a time of materials that runs out when it hits a certain number. And if you get to that and you haven't finished your work, you're going to ask for a change order. So I'm concerned about that structure of a contract. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? I just have one more follow-up question. Is how long do we anticipate the study to take?
This study starts in the summertime with a summertime study, which we have not done before. We haven't done parking studies in the summertime. We always felt that it was always full, and there was not much we could do about it. The second off-peak parking study will be done in the fall, approximately October, to kind of get normal conditions or conditions that are not summertime conditions. And then the consultant will be working on all of the strategies, the output, the report and all of that through the wintertime. In the spring, it will become available for us to review and have it brought back to the city council for you to review as well and our commissions, and have it ready for implementation for next summer.
So about a year?
So about a year.
Okay.
With regard to the not-to-exceed contract, we put the not-to-exceed contract in there because they are required to complete all of the tasks that are in the scope of work, regardless of how much it costs them. And so if the cost gets overrun because they spent too much, it's not our fault. We only give them the maximum amount.
So is there any other value we receive to this? Like, for example, is it actionable items? Are CEQA compliant? They're Coastal Commission compliant, things like that, recommendations?
Yes. If you take a look at the proposal and the RFP, it has quite a detailed list of deliverables and questions that need to be answered by the consultant. And it also includes CEQA, and it also includes Coastal Commission concerns.
Okay. Great. Some more questions? Councilmember Napolitano?
No questions.
Okay.
I thought we were in public comment.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Public comment. Okay. Martha, anybody online?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay. So we'll close public comments, and we can have our discussion. Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am still opposed to this project. I think it's a waste of money. With all respect with staff, I think that, you know, they do a great job. I'm not convinced that this is going to add value to what they do. I think that, for instance, the discussion about the North End parking in the area next to the High Rose, we're all aware of that. We've talked to Chevron. We know that. I don't need a consultant to tell me anything about that that I don't already know. In terms of acquiring it, what it will cost and things like that, those are the important things. The accountant, the consultant here isn't going to tell us how we're going to afford those things. It's really a matter of money and getting agreements and things like that. It's actually on Al Segundo property. So there's lots of variables there that will have to be dealt with that I don't even know the consultant knows. And neither do I. They need to dive into those things. You know, other things, e-bikes, shuttles, again with shuttles, all these things, their goals, I get that, but they're either vague or repetitive of the things we've already done. Despite the not doing it for a couple of years, we know how many parking spaces are. I don't believe, in terms of outreach and things like that, if that's what we're paying them for, outreach. We've got the Downtown Association. We've got the North End BID. We have representatives to those. These are the same folks who are on our downtown dining task force. These are the people who know the parking intimately. Our retailers know it. Our restaurateurs know it. Our residents know it. You know, consultants, they bring folks together and they write down the things that we already know and then add things to it that we've already rejected in the past. And with this incremental increase, we are getting to the downtown strategic plan that everyone has lamented for years on top of the downtown dining center. So 400, 250, what comes next? So I'm a no.
Okay. Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Three things. I want to back it up for a second. 15 years ago, we didn't have EVs, bikes, cars, all that. Changed. Our whole world changed because of that. To Eric's point, a traffic engineer, I don't know what the requirements are. No one does. Unless they're pros, they can tell you exactly what the requirements are. And EV parking, everything else, we need a charging station besides our mall. We're good at that. That's one thing. If I'm at Resident North End, which I'm not, I used to be, but if I was, I want to know that information. And take the cost out of it for a second. And the second thing I would say is that the report, A2 through A9, does a step-by-step, when these were deliverables, I'll say, shows you exactly what they're going to do for the money. Just read it. A2 through A9. It's all there. I like the fact that CEQA's involved. I want to go through the exercise again. The Coastal Commission, as you know, anything we do in this city west of, I'd say, west of Ardmore Valley, Coastal Commission will get involved no matter what we do. And so there's one more idea then, what's going to happen? What they're going to ask us to do? They want to see more parking. Guess why? Because we have a beach to our west. They want more access. And the more we show them, and we did do a study recently, not 15 years old, we are looking at what the new demand is, especially summertime here in Manhattan Beach. So that's the second item. Third item, Eric, I don't know they've done this, and probably Director Lee can jump in there. I hope that someone out there looks at these things, and we look at plans and design, that we look at cameras, locations for EVs and goons, and that's happened in our parking garages. We're doing that now at city facilities. Whatever you do going forward in the city, you should always have camera component. Have you looked at camera component? What do we know going in there? So this exercise doesn't happen after the fact. But if this does, and we look at a garage down the road, or if someone else designs a garage or a new Lot 3, that someone had the common sense to put a camera study in there so we can all see what it is. But I'm hesitant, Steve, not because of the cost so much, because this is a, I know parking is money for other things, but only parking-related, I'd rather not kick the can another year down the road and then find out that the mayor's volunteers couldn't quite do what we wanted to do. I'm fine with the mayor's volunteers. We have great people that can help us. And the not-to-exceed portion is bothering. That's government speak for, you finish it whether we pay you or not. I get it, Eric. But I'm fine with that. But I don't want to wait another year to find out we're 16 years late to the party, and we don't know any more about our study requirements or downtown or North End parking that we didn't know today. That's it, Your Honor.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Protem Horwath?
Yeah. I mean, I am inclined to support this as well for lots of reasons. So staff capacity, for one thing. And we heard from staff that this will include CEQA analysis, Coastal Commission review process. You know, the consultant will work with the staff. It's not like the staff's not going to tell them, oh, there's this parking lot behind the, you know, Veranda's High Rose. They are going to be working with staff direction. And they will bring an outside perspective, so they will listen to businesses. They will listen to downtown residents. They may listen to restaurants. And then they can sort of translate that so that we're not just hearing, you know, a biased view. And there's also so much technical stuff that goes into this. It's not just, well, we want more parking for our business, right? I also, I mean, I think everything is different than it used to be, so a new study makes sense. With respect, I think there's a lot of things that are different. If you're considering shuttles, right, I know that was, I mean, it's in the report and it's something you brought up. So there's a lot of things that we may not even be thinking about when you see the word shuttles. Yes, we wanted to do shuttles before. Yes, it's expensive. But, you know, there's also federal money out there if it's near a transit corridor. Well, we have places in our community that are transit corridors, bus stops. So if we could have shuttles that maybe get employees out, you know, how does that help our parking ratios? That's something that we need help analyzing. You know, if we can, if those shuttles can be electric golf cart-type vehicles or buses to connect them to electric golf cart vehicles that could go up and down Highland, how does that affect parking? I think it's a little more difficult, or difficult is the wrong word, complex than we have 3,000 parking spaces. And I do, so I'm inclined to support, and I do hope that they will, you're absolutely right. We have the woman, you know, from Loyola and other amazing community members, great, help out. But remember, if we were doing an all-volunteer effort, that would be another staff time kind of burden, not burden, that's a negative, but it would add to their, you know, capacity that they don't have. Speaking of burdened, the money, it sounds like a lot of money, but you're getting a full cadre of different kinds of experts. And we're not adding staff. We're not adding, you know, pensions. We're not adding, you know, health benefits. So I know people get angsty about over-reliance on consultants. I get this. They're bringing some expertise, not burdening our budgets in the future. I myself happen to be a government consultant, and I will assure you, when it's a not-to-exceed, I still keep doing the work, right? And I make it all happen, but I may, if it takes me too long, shame on me. So I am supporting this, but I wanted to get all those things out there because I think this is really important for our community, so important. So I'll be making a motion to support.
Thank you. Councilmember Lesser.
I'm troubled by the cost, but I too am supportive of moving forward with the study. So many initiatives that this body looks at requires up-to-date parking data. To have as our baseline a parking study that was done in 2008, think about how much has changed, as was indicated by Councilmember Montgomery. To try and have our staff take the lead with our residents in updating our studies, think of our limited capacity, how we have many other priorities for our traffic engineer as well as for our community development and public work staff. I'm troubled by the cost. I was surprised by the cost. But nonetheless, hearing how it will also be an important baseline for many other things that we want to do as a city, I will be supportive.
Great. Thank you. I'm just going to have to go back to the resumes that were submitted for the commissions. A great talent, I mean, they ran organizations that are bigger than our city, okay? They were either vice presidents or presidents or CEOs. They're engineers. Look at our building appeals group. They have constantly said, hey, we got nothing to do. Put us to work. They're retired. They're talented. They live here. So when they talk about, I can't find a parking space in front of the kettle, you know, at 3:00 in the afternoon on a Saturday, on a sunny Saturday, you know, they feel the pain. We're limited by the constraints of what we have out there in terms of the ability to employ whatever might be recommended. We talk about ride share. Well, look at ride share. I mean, it used to cost, you know, one-third of what it costs now with Uber. So people are probably thinking, ah, maybe I won't take Uber. So now we're back to the old, you know, they're circling around. We've got traffic flow considerations to think about. And all these things, I think, can be solved locally with a task force. We keep talking, you know, we're using a great resource of our residents for the Downtown Dining Task Force. I think we just use this as an overlay, take the information that they're getting. I just think it's worth a shot. I don't think much is going to change over a year or two. I think they'll probably deliver it sooner. And I would certainly feel better about it if it came from some, someone like my next-door neighbor is working on it. So I'm not going to support this.
Your Honor.
Yes.
First of all, I agree with the mayor. I do think we have an incredible pool of talented folks. And if anything, I would put a working group of those folks together because I can count. And I see where this is going in support for, but perhaps a working group of those folks together can work with the consultant. I still, as much as folks like to say things have changed, they haven't. You know, if we need a study to put in new EV charger stations, again, I was for getting out of the EV charger business. I don't think we should be responsible for folks charging their cars. E-bikes, things like that, you don't see a lot of people dressed up taking the e-bikes and the dresses and the high heels downtown. So I, you know, if someone has posted that on social media with the goons, you know, I'm glad to look at it. But, you know, there's lots of things. What hasn't changed, what has only increased is the demand for parking downtown. For everyone who said shuttle, we'll do e-bikes, we'll do ride share, there is a lack of parking on any given summer day or summer night downtown. That's how it's going to be because we're a highly desirable beach city that people want to go to. And we have great restaurants and shops and everything else. So, you know, the number of spaces, things like that, again, I hope, I'm convinced wrong, none of the studies previous to this have convinced me that they have shown any value that our folks here and the organizations we already have and the people we already have couldn't do as well. So I'm a no with you, Your Honor.
Okay. And just one more comment I forgot to mention is, thank you for doing the negotiation and knocking it down from $500,000 to where it is. That's the kind of work we really like to see. So, thank you. Okay. Can we have a vote? Call for a vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you. Motion passes 4 to 1.
Okay. And we're going to take a short break. It's 7:52, maybe to 8:05, please. Thank you.
Colleagues, I realize that I inadvertently pressed the wrong button on the last vote. So, item number seven. Could we please?
Revote, yes.
Revote?
All right. There's still time, you guys. Do the right thing.
That's Dave, you can. There's still time.
We made good use of those eight minutes.
Who in the majority would like to make a motion to reconsider?
Yeah, motion to reconsider?
No, wait.
My end.
No, wait. No.
He's part of the majority. He can make a motion.
Wait.
Well, I guess you can't, yes. You can, because he voted yes. So, he is part of the majority.
I'd like to make a...
I can leave it. I can make a motion to... Without being part of the majority.
All right, in all seriousness.
Item number seven?
The first thing is to make a motion to reconsider. If that passes, then you... The slate is clean. Then you have another vote to approve or deny.
Mulligan and golf, we got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, so take... So, Dave, so you may make the motion to reconsider.
I move to reconsider. Item number seven.
Okay. A vote. Okay.
Okay. So...
Now, we have to vote on the motion to reconsider.
We have to have a vote, please? So, I vote yes on this. Sorry, folks. Right? Is that...
Well...
Wait.
Motion to reconsider.
Yeah, just a motion to reconsider the action to allow the mayor to change his vote.
So, I will vote yes in professional courtesy to my colleague as opposed to playing gamesmanship.
It is so noted.
Motion passes four to one.
Millions up here.
So, that passed. Make a motion to approve.
Okay, so I move approval of the parking management.
And then, there's the conundrum again. He's doing it... He's seconding it.
No, well, that's because he did... That's not a conundrum.
So, we had a motion to...
Approve.
Reconsider, and now you have an option.
To reconsider item number seven?
Correct.
And now we... No, now the motion is...
Now, this is the vote.
Now, the motion is to approve it.
To approve it. Oh, God, I almost did it again. Jeez.
I can lean over. I got long arms.
Do not give the mayor any launch codes.
These are... I feel a lot of...
Motion passes three to two.
My finger was guided by these.
That motion passed with two noes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your indulging me on that. I'll make sure it doesn't happen again, so we move on to item number 12. So, Public Works Director Lee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, a presentation on this public hearing will be provided by Senior Civil Engineer Jeff Fialka and Associate Planner Tari Kuwengwa.
I know, I didn't do that one.
Mulligan.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, members of the council. Jeff Fialka, Senior Civil Engineer. As Director Lee indicated, here tonight to discuss the 28th Street Stormwater Infiltration Project. So, tonight's presentation will be split between Senior... Sorry, Associate Planner Tari Kuwengwa and I. First, I'll start out the presentation by describing the project origin, concept, and benefits, as well as the major infiltration system components and the project funding. I'll then hand it off to Ms. Kuwengwa from our planning department, who will discuss the environmental review and findings, as well as the coastal... The requirements for the issuance of coastal development permit. So, the city of Manhattan Beach is required by the Clean Water Act to take responsibility for the quality of stormwater discharges from the city's stormwater system into federally protected waterways and water bodies. So, for the city of Manhattan Beach, the stormwater discharges into two different water bodies. One is the Santa Monica Bay, and the other is the Dominguez Channel. If you look at the image on the left side of the screen here, in the upper left, the dark blue outline is the outline of the city of Manhattan Beach. And the area within that outline that's in pink is the portion of the city that drains to Santa Monica Bay. The portion in the upper right corner within the city of Manhattan Beach outline that's shaded in green drains to Dominguez Channel. So, that'll actually be the topic of item 15 later tonight. But we're going to be focused for this presentation and this item on the pink area which drains to Santa Monica Bay. Now, the image on the right here is giving an example of the water that is discharged into Santa Monica Bay, how it gets there from the city's storm drain system. So, it's either through these outfalls that are going to be discharging at the water line or directly into the beach sand. What we're seeing here is the outfall at 28th Street, which discharges at the water line, depending on the tide, but generally right around the water line. So, that 28th Street drain that we just saw on the last slide is pretty significant because the storm drain system that connects to it covers 60% of the land area of the city. So, meaning that when there's a rainstorm in the city of Manhattan Beach, the rain that falls on 60% of the land area, what's in the shaded teal colored here with the dark blue outline, is going to enter the ocean through that outfall that we just saw in the last slide. Another thing that's significant about this outfall is that it's routinely monitored. So, five days a week throughout the year, wet and dry seasons, water samples are collected at the water line near this outfall. And what's been found is that routinely, these water samples, particularly before... Sorry, during and after storm events are showing exceedances of bacteria. And as I mentioned earlier, that's the city's responsibility to ensure water quality meets the guidelines developed by the state in order to ensure compliance with federal regulations. So, the city... The city conceived a plan to infiltrate the stormwater, capture it coming from this 28th Street storm drain, and infiltrate it before it reaches the ocean. So, the overall concept is described here on this slide in a simplified flowchart manner. Essentially, it would be to divert urban runoff from the storm drain, the 28th Street drain, pump the runoff to an underground infiltration system, pretreat it within that system, and then infiltrate it into the ground and allow it to percolate down into the unsaturated soils and then eventually reaching the water table. So, some of the benefits to a project like this include not only, you know, what's being discussed, which is the improvements to water quality at the beach and in the bay, a reduction of bacteria, trash as well. So, if we capture the stormwater before it goes to the ocean, we would be preventing that trash that otherwise would have washed out to the ocean and debris as well. We could also minimize the potential for beach closures, enhance the environment for marine life, create opportunities for education and outreach, and improve the site at which this facility is construction... constructed, which we'll see that site in just a second here. So, the city performed a feasibility study, which concluded in 2021, to assess different sites within the city to see if any of them would be suitable for a large-scale stormwater capture project, such as what's being described here. The site that was found to be the most suitable is the 26th Street Parking Facility, otherwise known as the Bruce's Beach Parking Lot, located between 26th and 27th Street, Manhattan Avenue, and Ocean Drive. So, we contracted a designer to prepare a construction drawings for this project. And it's currently in the design development right now. The conceptual layout is shown here on the screen, and I'm going to walk you through some of the major components, and then we'll see what they look like on the following slides just to give a sense of the size of this project, as well as what each of these features do. I'll probably reiterate this, but it's important to keep in mind that predominantly, these are underground features. So, they are pretty large, but you're going to see that they're... They're going to be located below ground. So, once this project is completed, there's going to be very little surface manifestations of this large infrastructure. So, essentially, the overall way the system will work is by capturing water out of that 28th Street storm drain, which is at the top of the screen, running down 28th Street. This is an existing pipe that was put into place in the 1960s. It was tunneled into place. It's a 72-inch diameter pipe that was bored through the sand dune and all the way out to the ocean. At Manhattan Avenue, it's approximately 40 to 45 feet deep. So, the project involves intercepting it at that location, at Manhattan Avenue and 28th Street, with a diversion structure, which we're going to see an example in a minute, boring a pipe from that location south-southeast towards the intersection of Manhattan Avenue and 27th Street, where we will construct an underground pump station. The pump station will lift the water near to ground surface, but still below ground, where it can then gravity flow into a trash capture device and through a sedimentation chamber before being routed to a series of drywells. So, I went through that pretty quick. Again, we're about to see some of this actual equipment and learn what it does. So, the diversion structure, as I mentioned, would be constructed at 28th Street and Manhattan Avenue, and it would be built over the top of the existing pipe. It would look similar to what's shown here. This is the basic concept. It's a concrete structure that'll intercept the existing pipe and allow water to flow in a different direction once it's collected there. There would be an access point that would come all the way up to the ground surface. And again, the existing pipe is 40-plus feet below the ground surface at Manhattan and 28th Street. From there, the water would gravity flow down Manhattan Avenue, or a pipe buried below Manhattan Avenue, to the underground pump station. The pumps would be housed in a large underground concrete chamber, such as what's seen here. Again, this would all be underground. The water would be pumped up, and then it would enter and flow by gravity through a trash capture device, also an underground concrete structure, which has netting and essentially cages to capture the trash, which would be routinely cleaned out by Public Works. From there, the water would flow into a sedimentation system. This is basically a winding path of concrete structures that the water would flow through, and suspended solids would settle out. After leaving there, the water would go into a series of different drywells. So, 40 of these are planned, 32 of them below the parking lot, and eight of them in the grass area at the base of Bruce's Beach's... Bruce's Beach Park. A drywell, if you're not familiar, is essentially a drilled shaft. The upper portion of it has a concrete cylinder that fills with water, and the bottom of it is open, and below it is a drilled shaft filled with gravel. So, the water enters the shaft, and then will slowly percolate. And depending on the percolation rate of the soil, it can actually go pretty quick. Quite a bit of water can go through rather rapidly. It'll go through this chamber into the gravel at the base of the chamber and then move through the subsurface. In addition to the improvements I just described, because the parking lot is going to have 32 of these drywells in it, the parking lot will be pretty well torn up during construction. We see this as an opportunity to make significant improvements to the parking lot. The existing concrete retaining walls are, in some cases, definitely spalling, in some cases potentially failing. So, we would be fully replacing these retaining walls around the parking lot with new concrete retaining walls. Additional improvements would be the creation of ADA accessible spaces in the parking lot, EV charging stations. We repaved the parking lot with permeable concrete, so the stormwater that falls within the parking lot could slowly percolate, and it wouldn't runoff of the parking lot's surface. Additionally, we would be removing the two staircases that are in the existing parking lot. And we would reverse one of the traffic... When the drive aisles, the north or the upper parking tier currently enters from the south and traffic heads to the north on both drive aisles, that would be reversed to allow better circulation through the parking lot. So, this probably sounds expensive. The estimated project cost at this time is on the order of about $26 million. Good news is, we have obtained grant funding to cover the... Our estimated costs for the project. The three grants shown here on the screen, we've received an award of $8.5 million from the State Water Board through the Proposition 1 program, another $4.9 million administered by the California Natural Resources Agency of Prop 68 money, and $17.6 million from the Safe Clean Water Program administered by LA County. So, these grant funds total $31 million. As I mentioned, we're currently looking at a project cost that's estimated more on the order of $26 million. But, you know, by the time this is completed, we may be using some more of that. But it does appear that we have sufficient funding to complete the project. So, I'll now hand this off to Associate Planner Kuwengwa, who will discuss the environmental review.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, council members. Now that Jeff has walked you through the project background and engineering design, we will now discuss the environmental review component. The proposed scope of work, which includes the stormwater infiltration system and associated parking facility improvements, qualifies as a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. In accordance with CEQA, an initial study was then prepared to identify potentially significant impacts resulting from the proposed project. The analysis in the draft study... In the draft initial study incorporated technical studies, including but not limited to a cultural resource assessment, as well as a construction noise and vibration assessment. The initial study identified potentially significant impacts in eight areas: air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, noise, public services, transportation, as well as tribal cultural resources. These impacts relate to air pollution due to dust during construction, the potential discovery of unanticipated cultural and tribal resources, construction noise and ground-borne vibration, public safety response times, as well as construction-related traffic. The initial study then identified mitigation measures that could be applied to reduce these potential impacts to a less-than-significant level. Pursuant to CEQA, the draft initial study/mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. City staff then released it for the standard public review period, which was 31 days, and lasted from February 16th through March 18th of this year. A public notice for this review period was provided in the Beach Reporter, mailed to owners and occupants within 100 feet of the project site, advertised on the city's social media, and there was signage posted around the project site as well. The draft initial study/mitigated negative declaration was made available for public review via the city website, as well as via hard copy at various public facilities, such as City Hall, Jocelyn Center, Manhattan Heights, and the Public Library. During that review period, public comments were received from a combination of five individuals, agencies, and Native American tribes. Responses to those public comments were prepared and are attached to the final initial study/mitigated negative declaration, which is provided with the staff report. In response to one of those public comments, a revised noise and vibration assessment was prepared. Overall, no new impacts or increases in significance of the impacts were identified. After that public review period concluded, a final initial study and MND was prepared, as I mentioned. In association with the proposed mitigation measures, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, as I'll refer to it, has also been created. The MMRP serves to identify and track the proposed mitigation measures, including which stage of the project they are applied, who is responsible for implementing them, who is responsible for monitoring that implementation, and whether any coordination is required with other agencies or parties. And a copy of that proposed MMRP is also attached to the staff report. The third and final component to this project is reviewing the project for compliance with applicable local regulations. This included the city's general plan, as well as the Manhattan Beach Local Coastal Program, or LCP. In accordance with that LCP, any development proposed within the coastal zone requires a coastal development permit. Thus, the third request we present for your consideration is that coastal development permit. There are certain findings that need to be made in order to approve a coastal development permit. The first is that the proposed project is located... That it conforms with the LCP, excuse me. First, the proposed project is located in the public and semi-public, as well as the open space zoning districts. The existing public parking facility is located within that public and semi-public zone, and that lower portion of Bruce's Beach is located in the open space zone. The project complies with the city's general plan and LCP land use designations of public facilities and parks slash open space. The use of the 26th Street Public Parking Facility will remain unchanged, and the lower portion of Bruce's Beach Park will remain as such as well. The underground infrastructure and utilities, while not regulated by these base zoning districts, are typically within or underneath the public right-of-way. As such, the project as conditioned will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, and they will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. Second, this project does not impact public access to the shoreline or sea. It does not permanently impact public access to the shoreline. Adequate public access is provided and shall be maintained along 26th, 27th, and 28th Streets, as well as Manhattan Avenue. Furthermore, the project does not create any barriers that prevent public access to the coast. Public noticing for today's hearing was provided in accordance with applicable regulations, which included publishing the hearing notice in the Beach Reporter, mailing that notice to property owners within 100 feet of the project site, and mailing... And as of May 15th, when this agenda was published, there were no public comments that had been received. This project as proposed in condition meets all of those required findings for coastal development permit. We do want to note that council cannot approve the conceptual engineering design that Jeff presented or adopt the coastal development permit unless the mitigated negative declaration for the environmental review is adopted first. Now, I will hand the presentation back over to Jeff.
So, staff recommends that City Council conduct a public hearing, adopt Resolution Number 24-0043, adopting the mitigated negative declaration. If and only if Resolution Number 24-0043 is adopted, staff further recommends that City Council approve the conceptual project layout and adopt Resolution Number 24-0044, approving the coastal development permit. Just want to add that next steps, if all of... If both of these resolutions are approved tonight, staff will move forward with our consultant and have the... finalize the design. We anticipate it would go out to bid, and we'd be awarding a contract by late fall of this year. We would have additional public outreach meetings before we go into construction. And that concludes the formal presentation. We do have staff available to answer questions, as well as Katie Harrell with CWE, the city's project design consultant, as well as Kathleen McGowan from McGowan Consulting, the city stormwater compliance consultant available remotely, if there are questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
Jeff, can you briefly describe the watershed management program and why we're required to undertake this project? That is, that it's not something that's feel-good or that's doing the right thing? It's that we're required to undertake this? It's in the staff report, but I don't think I heard it in the presentation.
Yeah, so it's... You know, it all... It all goes back to the Clean Water Act. The Clean Water Act requires state permits that are managed by the state, and then at the local level, the issuance of MS4 permits, municipal separate storm system permits. I messed that up, but... So... We participate with the other beach cities, Hermosa, Redondo, and Torrance, as part of the watershed man... South... The Beach Cities Watershed Management Group. And together, they come up with a plan to address these exceedances at the various outfalls from our cities collectively. And we have to do annual reporting where we indicate, you know, these are... These are where the exceedances are taking place, and this is the plan within... For each city to address the various exceedances. So, as I mentioned, this is a significant project because this one drain covers 60% of the land area in the city of Manhattan Beach. So, by addressing the exceedances that are routinely seen here, we can satisfy our commitment and our... Regulations that say that we have to, you know, maintain water quality from our storm drain system.
One of the requirements in our local coastal program is to ensure that this addresses climate change with regard to sea level rise. And there's a reference here to how the design of this does so. I want to confirm that has to do with the depth of the infrastructure. Is that why this complies with the sea level rise requirement of our local coastal program?
Yes, so at a minimum, you want the bottom of a drywell to be at least 10 feet above the water table that it's going to be infiltrating into eventually. And so, in order to assure... Ensure that the project is taking into account sea level rise, the design consultant looked at what the estimated sea level rise would be in this area at various confidence levels, and then adjusted the infiltration elevation accordingly. So, we are... We're above, even if sea level rises to what it's estimated to be, you know, in 50 to 90 or 100-year projection, we're still above that. So, that's how we feel that it is based on that study and those calculations that it's going to be resilient to sea level rise.
That's what I was asking about. Finally, in terms of the loss of this parking, can you confirm how long this project is anticipated to last?
We are currently estimating it's probably about an 18-month project. However, we'll have a better estimate of that once the design is finalized, we get contractor input. You know, and the duration... You know, and the duration of the project is largely going to be dependent on how it's sequenced, and, you know, how many crews are out there working. There's 40 drywells. A drill can generally install one drywell within one day. If we had two rigs out there, we could probably get the drywells drilled in 20 days. So there is some ability to adjust the construction duration, but we have to balance that with the cost as well.
Right. But we will be without that parking, as we, for example, plan for a Juneteenth celebration at the park, that lot will not be available.
So what we're planning is to do the improvements in the parking lot in the off-season, so in the winter season. We do have that ability, and it actually works well, because the other improvements tying into the storm drain system could then be done during the summer season, which, while it's our less busy season, it's outside of the storm season.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Nepal Tom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Slide number 11. Just want to confirm, because I heard one thing, that the Lower Bruce's Beach grass area is going to be unchanged, unchanged at the end of this, and yet, the drywell diagram there shows a manhole cover at the top of that drywall. So are there going to be eight drywell manhole covers at the surface of the grass area of Bruce's Beach?
No, we're going to design them so that the manhole cover is below the grass. This is not uncommon, that drywells and projects such like this are constructed in parks, where you may have a soccer field constructed over the top. The maintenance of drywells is such that even if you have a couple inches of soil and turf grown over the top of it, you only need to get into it, depending on the, the operations and maintenance, you know, procedures on the order of every year or so, where you'd actually have to open it up. So it's not uncommon that grass would be.
There will be grass over it.
There will be grass over the top of the ones there.
And then, do we currently, because in El Paso parking lot, we allow for, and I guess the pier parking lots, to some parking permits for the residents nearby, for overnight parking. Do we have those there now?
I'll defer that to the traffic engineer. You're talking about.
I don't think he wants to talk to me anymore.
If I understand the question, you're talking irrespective of this project, do we currently have a parking permit program with the 26th Street parking facility?
Yes, yes, okay. And then, so, we're talking about putting EV charging stations in, after I've said that I think we should get out of the EV charging station business. But, you know, if we do install those there, are those going to be ones that we charge for?
Absolutely.
And then what about the overnight parking there, and taking up those?
You build it, they'll come, and we'll charge for it.
Oh, boy.
And my understanding is if they're being used, we will be charging for the energy that they're providing.
And if someone doesn't want to pay, they'll sit there unused with charging stations there?
I don't believe we have permits that fill the parking lot.
I don't know. Still not talking to me.
There's, there are, there's a little, there's almost 70 parking spaces, there will be three EV chargers, and we'll have capacity to add 10 more in the future. So it's a small percentage of the parking lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hey, two things for you, Jeff. The cost part of it, I know we have funding from everywhere else, but to override the funding, who pays for it? Are we on the hook of the, over the cost?
If we exceed the $31 million that's been awarded to date, we, there are some options there. I mean, if we did not have any ability to get additional grant funding, essentially, yes, there's nobody else stepping in to cover it for us, it would be the city's responsibility. However, you know, when we receive bids, if they are over, keep in mind, there's already about a $5 million buffer there. But if they do exceed, there are opportunities to look for other grant programs, and some of these grant programs, such as the Safe Clean Water Program, you know, have a process to go back and request additional funding. Now, there's obviously deadlines tied to that, but there are, we would look for additional funding if it came to it.
And the override over budget, is there a cap from our end? We can say, we're only contributing $5 million over. We can put our own self-imposed cap if it goes over. If we don't get any more funding past that point, we can't.
Council would have the freedom to do that.
And the last question, more of a comm dev question than Public Works, was that a error? We only sent out notices to 100 feet from the site? I know we did it, I know we did it for the paper, we talked about it, but remember, we talked about it in the fall of 2020, we were busy in 2020 with COVID. No one paid attention to what we're doing in COVID.
Sure, so the 100-foot radius is the requirement for coastal development permits. There has been additional outreach that was done to the community, which Jeff could speak about, but the 100 feet is for the, just the coastal development permit.
We did have a community outreach in October, we, at the site. We held another one in February, and for both of those, we noticed, well, for sure, the one in February, we noticed everybody from Marine all the way up to Rosecrans. We sent out over 1,000 notices for that one. And the one in October was not quite as far up, but we went to about six blocks in each direction from the project site.
October 23?
October of 2023, and then again in February of 2024.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay, great. So Jeff, thank you for going through all this. Couple of questions, is I learned, in digging into this, that Hermosa Beach was going to be doing one of these projects, but then ultimately decided not to. So it just, and, and the, Los, what are we calling it? The, where we combine with?
The Watershed Management Group?
What now?
The Beach Cities Watershed Management Group?
Yeah, Beach Cities Watership Management Group, okay? So that's Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, and Torrance.
Yes.
So none of them have a project on this scale?
Currently, none of them have a project at this scale. There was a previously envisioned project that was, would have addressed drainage from a drainage area much larger than ours, but it was combined drainage out of all three of those cities. It was proposed to be at the Green Belt, and there was much resistance from the residents of Hermosa Beach, because only about 15% of that drainage area would have been coming from Hermosa Beach. It was slightly different as well, in that it was proposed within the Green Belt itself, which was somewhat contentious in that it, you know, there were concerns about having to uproot all of the trees in it for these excavations to then put, you know, to put these large concrete structures underneath the Green Belt, and then you'd have, obviously, very small trees growing over the top of it. And it was slightly different in that we're proposing drywells, which are the drilled shafts, and that was large concrete chambers. And, you know, there was a level of discomfort from some of the property owners surrounding it, of that water being stored, you know, in their backyard, and it not being kind of their water, in a way.
Okay, but, but the water that's coming down through the 28, through the pipe on 28th Street, where's that, I mean, that's coming from Manhattan Beach, but it's also coming from east of us, right?
No, that water is coming from Manhattan Beach. If we take, is it, can I go back? Sorry, I'll show you the map, and I can, we can hopefully see it in enough detail. Okay, so this, on this map here, the red outline is the city limits, and the, the blue is the drainage area for the 28th Street drain. So we are picking up in that southeast corner, I mean, if you look at that little tiny square outside of the red line, it's representing less than 1% of the area.
Okay. So it just seems like Manhattan Beach is shouldering a lot of the burden to, to, to do the cleaning of this water, and then getting it out to the ocean ultimately.
Our responsibility, oh, sorry.
And it's 60%, right? The report said approximately 60% of the storm water that falls on Manhattan Beach is collected by the 28th Street drain.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, that we are responsible for the cleanliness of the water coming out of the storm drains within the city of Manhattan Beach. And so this 28th Street is only draining Manhattan Beach by over 99%. It's just our water. The Herando drain that was proposed to be addressed by that other project at the Green Belt is, again, a very large storm drain, similar to the 28th Street, but it's collecting water from all three of those cities, and 85% of it is not water that's falling within the city of Hermosa Beach. This drainage area that 28th Street covers is larger than the city of Hermosa Beach.
So we learned, just going through the big pool analysis and everything, there's the cost of rebuilding the pool, and then there's ongoing maintenance. So describe the ongoing maintenance costs to this, and then also, where, where are those funds coming from to pay those, the ongoing maintenance?
So it's estimated that the annual maintenance, now, we have not yet completed the full design, but at the feasibility study stage, there were some estimates prepared for what the annual maintenance cost would be for this system, and it was on the order of $150,000 a year. Now, there would be some offsets, because it would reduce potentially the maintenance at the distributed catch basins throughout the city. So there are, most of our catch basins have some type of screening, but if we were to, at some point, remove some of that screening, then the trash could be collected downstream here, so, but the current estimate is $150,000 a year to maintain it.
And then where would that money be coming from?
I would imagine the Stormwater Fund, but I can defer that to Director Lee.
Let them answer.
Those funds would either come from the storm drain fee, or we have Measure W allocation that we get. And so, once those costs are known, we certainly will be bringing that back to the city council. Furthermore, we have a sewer crew in Public Works that is the manpower behind a lot of this, and so potentially, some of that staff labor that we already have could be contributing to that as well.
Okay, so that's cleaning, cleaning out the, the trash from the drain, from the screening?
Correct, so there's, there's a lot of work that we do before and after storms, cleaning catch basins, that's very labor-intensive, and so that's one of the advantages of a project like this, is it really focuses our, our attention in areas where everything funnels. So there's, there's more to follow, but there's a great opportunity for us to get better as we progress with this project.
Okay, and the $150,000 doesn't, does that include a contingency fund for replacing, you know, parts and mechanical parts, but also just the infrastructure? I mean, what, what's the useful life of the infrastructure?
I'll turn that back to Jeff.
It's a 25-year design life. You know, we, as I mentioned, the cost estimate for maintenance was prepared during the feasibility study. I could check with the designer who's on the line, but we probably don't have a more detailed number for you at this time, because we have not prepared the final design or the operations and maintenance manual, which would drive what those actual costs are estimated to be.
Okay, in, in a project like this, you know, capital-intensive project, I mean, how does the city sort of put, put aside reserves for replacement? You know, like, like the PEC reservoir, right? That went on for 50 years, right? So I assume we put money aside in the CIP to replace it?
That's what we were talking about the other night. No, we don't.
Yeah, right? I mean, I just don't, I'm thinking about burdening future councils.
So the concept is, is very similar to, say, a reservoir where it's got useful life of decades, and if we're planning for the future well, we'd be setting aside funds every year to do that. Same thing with our sewer infrastructure, our storm infrastructure, those are things that certainly we will need to address in the future. At this point, with the project that's being proposed, with the grants that we've secured, it's really to jumpstart this and get it constructed, and certainly, we're going to have to figure out how to maintain it over the next 100 years.
But sources are not identified at this point?
So we're gonna?
Correct, and so it's, essentially, it becomes an asset of the, the storm fund, and so presumably, in the future, storm fees could be used for it, we could potentially get grants for it. It really just depends how these projects progress. The whole region is grappling with similar projects, not only our, our partners in the Beach Cities Watershed Management Group, the county, the West Side Cities, the Ventura County Cities, these, these are all, these are all known issues, and really, what the regulators are doing is they're, they're funding the, the, kickstarting these projects to get them going, so that we can get the water cleaned. But your, your point is very well-taken, Mayor, in the long run, these are costs that we're going to have to grapple with.
Okay. The scale of the project, you mentioned on page 463 of the staff report, that the proposed project involves the construction of a stormwater diversion and infiltration system capable of capturing up to 67 acre-feet of water from a single storm event. So a couple of questions is relating that to gallons, because most of us don't think in terms of acre-feet, so I believe you answered my question, it's about 21,000 or 22,000, 22 million gallons?
Correct, just shy of 22 million gallons. You know, and for perspective, the new PEC reservoir is 8 million gallons.
Okay, so PEC reservoir, so it's going to be three, two and a half times the amount of water that's in PEC reservoir now, going through this project?
Yes.
Potentially. And then, so that, and that's going to be spread among the 40 wells?
Yes.
And?
And it will, based on the percolation rate of the soil, it's presumed that that water will proceed pretty rapidly into the aquifer down below the project. That 67 acre-feet is a 24-hour capture volume. Now, you know, any infiltration project is based on assumptions that were developed as a result of a geotechnical study. If the project is not able to capture that, or if the project needs to be repaired and the pumps go down, stormwater can continue to flow out the 28th Street drain. So we're diverting it off of there, but if for some reason there is a need, or if the project cannot capture as much water, that water would simply bypass the system and continue to go out to the ocean as it does now.
Untreated?
Untreated.
Untreated, okay. The, the maintenance costs, I mean, what, what do you treat the water with in terms of bacteria? Is it some sort of chemical, I imagine, or some sort of?
No, it's, it's treated in the sense that we are screening out the solids, the trash, and settling out the, the floatables, the sediment, the suspended, you know, silt. The bacteria remains in the water. There is some amount of breakdown through microbes in the soil, but ultimately, the bacteria is going to stay in this water and be converted over time as it enters the subsurface. It's just not entering the ocean as, you know, bacteria-laden water.
Right, so it goes down instead of out?
Exactly, so, you know, and keep, you know, it's going to be in, in a sand-filled aquifer for some period of time.
Okay, so, so there is no chemical or biological treatment of the bacteria?
That is correct.
Okay, got it. Just a couple more questions. The mitigation, you know, there was a lot of detail in the mitigation. That's dust, that's flocking birds, I read, and also Native American artifacts and the like. It talked about, you know, the filters that are in the diesel equipment and things like that. Who, who's responsible for monitoring all that, and who pays for that monitoring?
It depends on the specific mitigation measure that's identified. Most of them, like the ones you just mentioned, related to the equipment, the noise, the dust, are largely going to be the responsibility of the contractor during construction to actually implement the mitigation measure. However, it's going to be the city who's ultimately responsible that it gets implemented and that it's effective. So we can, you know, provide that oversight through our, this project will have a third-party construction manager on-site, as well as a construction inspector. So they would be the ones ensuring that the contractor is complying, you know, and implementing these mitigation, mitigation measures, and that they are effective. But ultimately, all of those activities would be rolled into the full project cost. I mean, for the, for the contractor to implement all these mitigation measures, they're going to put that into their bid, because they're going to know upfront what's required in order to execute this project.
Right, but our staff time is not reimbursed through any of those?
The grants do allow staff time to be reimbursed, but it's not envisioned that oversight of those mitigation measures would be burdensome on staff, because as I mentioned, we'd have third-party consultants overseeing the direct construction of the project, but project management is currently being billed to the grants.
Okay, and then what recourse does a resident have? You know, if they see a lot of dust, and, you know, I mean, it even went into the description of, you know, sweeping up the, you know, the dirt from the ground and everything like that, and?
You know, the first step would be to, there will be a project information sign which would have a contact on there, and hopefully, that would resolve it. If they're not getting the response directly with the contractor, they would, would, like most of our projects, generally speak to the inspector, whoever has oversight, you know, or the construction manager, and that's generally how we get those resolved.
Okay, and how many residences will be directly impacted by all the construction? Like going down Manhattan Avenue and things like that, and?
It depends on what you define as impacted. I mean, there will be some large excavations that will be open for several months. The parking lot will be closed for a period of months. So impacted in the sense that? So, impacted in the sense that they wouldn't have available parking that they normally have, potentially hundreds of residents. Impacted that they may have, you know, dust, more dust in the street or near their home, probably dozens of property owners. Directly impacted where there's some restricted access to their property, probably two or three properties while we have the excavation opened up. It wouldn't be full restriction, but there would be some inconvenience that you couldn't drive fully through the intersection of 28th and Manhattan Avenue for a period of time.
Okay.
They're gonna give him your number, though, Jeff.
Yes, I'd be happy to forward that number on to. Okay. So, have we ever, I mean, I'm concerned that here's, here's an area at the beach, we're gonna be digging down, how deep? You know, the parking lots, we're gonna be going down how long, how far?
The deepest open excavation is going to be at 28th Street and Manhattan Avenue, and that's gonna be on the order of 40 to 50 feet. The dry wells are gonna be a six-foot diameter drilled shaft, so you won't actually, unless you're there watching the drilling, you wouldn't see an open excavation, you'll see an auger descend, pull spoils out, and continue that into the design depth, which is gonna be on the order of about 50 feet as well.
Okay, have we ever encountered in the large projects that we, that we've done, any sort of Native American artifacts and uncovering them, and then having to mitigate the area, or...
To my knowledge, the city of Manhattan Beach has not, perhaps, plan a way in on that?
That's, well, okay. Because I just wanna see the potential impact, if we did find some, how much that would impact the length of time for the project, delay it.
Yeah, I mean, the length of time it would impact the project really depends on what the find is and where it is. You know, there are projects that encounter human remains, and depending on the wishes of the ancestors of those remains, they may be encapsulated in place. So, if we were to find something that's not at a critical location, potentially, it would be preserved in place according to the wishes of the ancestors. If it required relocation of a major system component, it could be a significant delay to the project.
Okay.
I don't believe we have in the past uncovered that type of artifact in the city.
Not to my knowledge, and this, so, this is a requirement for mitigated negative declarations and EIRs to have, to have a tribal consultation and then incorporate a mitigation measure as the tribe seems fit. And again, we haven't done an MND or EIR in quite a while on major projects, and that's one of the reasons it hasn't been discussed recently. But potentially, we did have a mitigation like, measure like this in the past, but not that I'm aware of in the last five years or so.
Okay, but we are going down a significant amount, I mean, it's not like a basement for a strand home or anything like that.
Correct, which is, yes, we anticipated that this mitigation measure would be required.
Okay, great, thank you all. Okay, so, any more questions?
Public comment?
Okay, so, we'll move on to public comment. Thank you.
Good evening again, Stefan here. I was talking about this project with a good friend of mine over the weekend, and had a couple of thoughts on this, but first, I want to recognize what a wonderful presentation, professional presentation that was, they really did a spectacular job, Eric and team, I really appreciate that. I was doing some construction, and we had to do what's called low-impact development. These were projects in Hermosa Beach, on the strand, where we had to put in similar tanks to this, and they, very costly, but as I looked at this, I kinda thought, well, jeez, if we're requiring this, and we're creating Manhattan Beach, I believe, for homes, lot sizes over 10,000 or something like that, if we're requiring that, then we should, as a city, probably do it ourselves and demonstrate that we're gonna lead the way as a city. So, along those lines, though, a question would be, and maybe that's for you here, is if we're doing this, does that change our requirements for low-impact development for our community? I don't know if that's yes or no, if we don't know, we should investigate that, because those are very costly things for our residents to do if they're building. Then, one of the other questions would be is, you know, I'm sure it's in the study and everything else, do we have any risk of creating sinkholes when we have 40 dry wells in the same area, in that send area? I don't know, but I'd like to hear if that's the case. And the other question would be is, we're hitting 60% of the city of Manhattan Beach, what's happening to the other 40%? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If you're ready to, if you wanna make a public comment, you can already move on down and take a seat down here.
Thank you.
I'm Thornton Stone, I live just north of there, I lived on the park for about five years, had a property there. My family lives here, we spend a lot of time in the water, in the beach, I appreciate the goal to clean it up. This project won't do that, this has, I'm an engineer as well. In looking at this, looking at your numbers, if you look at that large map, you're taking a, you're making a concentration of 3,000 to 1 of water that you're gonna put onto the area the water's coming from, so that one inch of water that falls in the city, that puts about a 180-foot cube of water right there, right now, in 24 hours. Now, assuming you can stuff that through these dry wells, which possibly so, that's gonna change the quality of soil. In addition to that, this is polluted water, you're essentially trying to sidestep the need to create clean water by pumping polluted water right next to the ocean. Now, what happens when that water goes down, is it's gonna hit the, the aquifer below it is a saltwater aquifer, it's, the sand is saturated with saltwater at sea level, so the water, and it's denser, so this will not mix, it'll go out and layer out over it. So, you're gonna take this polluted water, you're gonna stuff it right there, and it's gonna flow out in all directions, uniform, in sort of a conical shape. This is going to put polluted water out under these houses, it's gonna put water that they're designed for into the houses, it's gonna put water that's polluted out into the sand that's up in the, above the, the waterline level of the ocean. And so, your goal is to not have a dirty ocean, your goal is also not to have a dirty beach, and you're gonna do this year in, year out, concentrating, it's in their benefits. If you read their quality, what are quality report? All the good things they're doing of taking the water out, that stuff's going into this soil, right here in this neighborhood. This, this, this park has been the whipping boy of, you know, it's just, it's, this is, this is an egregious mistake, to say nothing of the endangerment of the local houses, they're These were designed and built, or were simply as-built, depending on when they were built, with their structural integrity based on soil qualities, geologic qualities of the sand being dry sand of a certain quality. If you now start pumping lots of water, even sporadically into it, you're changing that. Now, if you damage any one of those houses, your project costs go up astronomically, to say nothing of, you're now damaging those houses. Do you wish me to speak anymore or not?
Well, you're limited to three minutes, but what was your name again, please?
I'm Thornton Stone.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, Larry Greck from 2701 Manhattan Avenue. I live in the house, Action Central here, the northwest corner of 27th and Manhattan Avenue. Now, I have a house that was built in 1924, and to 1924 standards. There was an addition put on it by Vivian Vance, who owned the house before me, but I am sure that this water is gonna percolate, my house is a sand dune underneath it. I'm gonna wind up with this dirty water, or whatever, under my house, can't miss. Also, I'd like to, I came here to talk about the fact that, you know, what testing have we done that is hard and fast testing? We, I've heard the words from the presentation, presumed, assumptions, contract of mitigation. What do we really know? Let's find out what the deal really is, before we go any further. Those words have to be eliminated. You know, and for instance, they're gonna put in 40 dry wells, that's what fits where they have, but who says 40 dry wells will do it? Maybe 30 would do it, and it'd be a lot less costly, maybe you need 45 or 50. How did we determine the number of 40 dry wells? This, this project, which has been going on for a long time, which, I have lived in that house for 53 years, and I have never heard of this project until about two or three months ago, when I saw the pop-up in the Bruce's Beach, and Jeff was there. That was the first I heard of it, and I was a member of Sand Area Residents years ago who kept the bathroom blockhouses off the beaches, and I was very involved, I've been before City Council here, Mike, Mike Sweeney, and people of that era, I've been up here many, many, many times, I haven't been recently, but this has me really upset about what you people are proposing to do, or what the staff is proposing to do. It's like, money was given to us, well, by God, we better spend it.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I was, and what I also wanted to talk about, we talked about mitigation to property damage. Daily Breeze, monster landslide fears brought to Palis Verdes. Are we creating our own Palis Verdes?
Thank you, sir, yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else in chambers? Want to make a comment? No, how about online?
We have Craig Catwalder.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members and staff, my name is Craig Catwalder, and I'm speaking with a couple of hats tonight, one is as a policy coordinator for Surf Rider South Bay, and the other is, I'm Chair of the South Santa Monica Bay Watershed Area Steering Committee, I've been Chair for the last three years, and Vice Chair for the two years ahead of that, and we did approve this project, the funding of which is 57% of the entire $31 million cost, and we looked at it carefully, we know the engineering firms that were involved in the analyses, and I believe this analysis was extremely well-performed. The mitigated negative declaration, in my opinion, after being involved in countless EIRs, is well-done and properly developed, and I, if I were living, I used to live up the street on 28th Street, so I'm familiar with the area, and I can tell you, especially the closer you get to the beach, the better this project is, and just think, you're walking out into a water that's gonna be cleaner, with less trash, less bacteria than what you have right now, that's gonna improve your health and well-being, your children's health and well-being, visitors' health and well-being, and your neighbors' health and well-being, and this is a great project. I am very much in support of this Surf Rider, because of some technical glitches missed the deadline to produce a support letter, but we're fully in support of this, because it creates a cleaner, healthier beach, and a cleaner, healthier ocean, and we consider the ocean our playground, so to speak. This is a wonderful project, and the fact that it has multiple funding is great. The Safe Clean Water Program, we just approved our 24, 25 projects, and we couldn't fund everything. Our carryover expenses from previous years was 13.5 million, we had 17, six total tospens, so 80% of our money was taken up previously, and there may be a change in accepting new projects every two years, but this is wonderful, please support it, please support both resolutions, and the sooner this can go forward, the better. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Craig.
Next is Gerald Johnson.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Yeah, I did. Okay, we'll be quick, we'll double up on this, my wife and I. The concerns I have mostly have to do with traffic, you know, if you're one of the people that live within three or four, or especially one or two blocks of the project, you know what a nightmare it is already, trying to find a parking spot, it's worse than trying to get into a football game. You know, I don't think that enough consideration has been given to contingencies, thinking about the people that wanna have company once in a while, or wanna have a handyman come over, the parking already is almost impossible to deal with. One of the comments I made earlier this year was, it's a wonderful opportunity, in my view, to put a two-story parking structure in over there where the, where the parking ones are, you're not gonna block anybody's view, and it's really needed here, you know, you got one on the north side of town, and you got a big one down there by, by Kettle and all of that. And then the other thing is, you mentioned, this is the first time I've heard about this, parking permits might be available for the El Porto parking lot, wow, wonderful news, I'll get my electric bike out, just, how else do you get back and forth? Are you gonna have a shuttle or something? But that, you know, I'm not complaining, that's, that's an opportunity there, I mean, if you can walk that far, it'd be worth it and everything, so anyway. The other thing, there's gonna be more traffic, there's a lot of it that's planned for these trucks to come in and pick up all the solid waste, don't they have to clean out the goop at the bottom of the wells every now and then? That means more trucks and nice smells, stuff like that going on. See, what else do I have? I think my wife has some, I'm sorry, I used up so much time, go ahead, Barb. Unmute?
Yeah.
Okay, come on in here. Okay, you only have 30 seconds.
Hi, this is...
She's got three minutes.
What are you getting to?
Oh, good.
Hi, this is Barbara Johnson, and I just want to disagree that the project will make the water cleaner, as the Surf Rider speaker just said. It just seems that, without knowing what the costs will be to this project, and that we let it go ahead without knowing how much we're going to be paying for it, and if it will work or not, and then just to pump more polluted water closer to the ocean, so it can all go in at one time. And I think the parking problems, the dust, the smell, the construction trucks, for the residents around here, just, I know somebody has to do it, we're not sure that this is the best place, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Anybody else?
There's no additional request on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll close public comments and colleagues. Your discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
Can we get some answers?
That was going to be my first request.
We have questions.
Okay.
There are things brought up.
You first, go ahead, David.
Yeah, Councilmember Lesser. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, what I was first going to start with was to ask staff whether they or whether an engineer that might be available telephonically can address some of the concerns that these residents just brought up.
Yes, we do have the project manager from CWE, but there were several things mentioned. Is anything specific you'd like her to start with? I mean, I did hear there was concerns about bacteria being introduced in the subsurface near their homes.
The heavy, the heavier, the heavier water on top of the sand that might make their basements or houses less stable, you know, like create, right? That was one of the things.
The capacity to really handle the flow, the potential for sinkholes, maintenance after the infrastructure's in place and what that might be in terms of impacts. Those were just some of the issues that were just raised.
Sure, I'll hand this off to Katie Harrell with CWE. But just a few general comments, you know, that infiltration will be occurring at some depth, you know, relative, especially to these houses that are at varying elevations as well. So if we look at the houses that are near the intersection of 27th Street and Manhattan Avenue, you know, those houses are at an elevation of about 60 to 65. They're currently, you know, over 50 feet above the water table. So if the water were to descend through the unsaturated soils to the water table and cause any amount of mounding there, it would have to mound 50 feet in order for water to be anywhere near their foundation. And older homes, you know, are generally smaller wooden structures on shallow foundations that would not be impacted by saturated soils down dozens of feet below the ground surface. I do say that as a geotechnical engineer, but I will hand this off to Katie Harrell with CWE.
Hello, thanks, Jeff. So there was a question about handling the flow capacity for the dry wells. So extensive modeling was performed to look at the hydrologic conditions of that drainage area that Jeff highlighted throughout the presentation. We modeled how flow would move through that drainage system and into the project. That's how we sized the diversion structure, the pump components, and basically all the parts that are included as part of the design, including the dry wells. So after the geotechnical exploration, we had an understanding of how fast the water could seep through the soils. And then we were able to look at how many dry wells would be required. So the 40 dry wells were determined based on that analysis. We looked at different scenarios of different depths of dry wells, the size of the dry wells, and basically could use the soil characteristics and flow characteristics to identify how much volume each dry well could accommodate during the 24-hour storm. And so that's how the system was sized. So there was a lot of engineering and analysis that went into that ultimate decision and the layout of the project. There was the question about the sinkholes and Jeff touched a little bit about the soil conditions. So as expected, we are over the sand dune area. And so very sandy soils were encountered during the geotechnical exploration. We looked at soils exceeding 50 feet in depth. That's how we know where the water table is in this area. And also it measured the rate at which water flows through the soil media. And so in this area, the infiltration rate has a very quick drawdown. So it vertically draws down quickly. And so because of that reason, the water that is being captured by the dry wells will infiltrate vertically rather than spreading laterally. And the infiltration doesn't start until it's at least 15 feet below the ground surface. And so the infiltration, the range in which infiltration can occur is to, is above the ground on our table, considering the sea level rise. So it's about 40 feet, 40 to 50 feet deep. And then it will not infiltrate any shorter than 15 feet. So we have clearance there as well from the residential home foundations that Jeff mentioned. There's also a question about the maintenance impacts. So the system components will be maintained at a regular schedule that will be established through the operation and maintenance plan that will be developed and finalized as part of the, there will be a draft done as part of the final design, and then that will be finalized after construction, once the exact components are known. There's different manufactured products that can be used. And so those manufacturers will have specific recommendations as well that will get incorporated into the plan. In general, the trash capture area will be the most maintained item, as well as the sedimentation system. The reason that those are installed is to help preserve the longevity and performance of the dry wells and to concentrate maintenance in an easier to access area. So the trash capture and sedimentation system are both located on Manhattan between 26 and 27. And so before and after, before the storm season and then every few months within the storm season and following large rain events, there will be inspections performed to assess how much trash has been captured and the sedimentation that's accumulated. And based on how much has been accumulated, if there is an extensive amount of trash or if a system needs to be cleaned out, then a backdoor truck, which is a truck with a large hose, will come and open up the access ports and pull out all the sediment and debris to dispose of them. This is done throughout the city already at several different trash capture locations where there are similar pretreatment devices already installed. So that's just a few hours of a back truck being occupied in the street that won't have significant impact on like long-term traffic or access. It'll be just a few hours during the maintenance period. And most of these can be accessed with just minor street detours or closing one lane of travel. I think that was most of the items, but feel free to let me know if I should touch on any other items.
Katie, what about the concept of fresh water floating or sitting on top of brackish water as opposed to descending into it or mixing with it? Is there any empirical evidence or physical phenomenon that would create that? I mean, that would be similar to if the storm water went right onto the ocean, would it float on top of ocean water? Or is it expected to mix? And how do we know that?
It is expected to mix. I would defer a little bit more to our geotechnical team, which is not present at this meeting. But under current conditions, the water, this same water that we're talking about goes out to the ocean through the 28th Street outfall. And there hasn't been any, through the monitoring efforts and through other assessments that have been ongoing, there hasn't been any known observation or documentation that the storm water being discharged into the ocean is maintaining any type of separation from the ocean water. When the monitoring is performed, they do the monitoring just outside the outfall within the ocean, and it is a mix of brackish water and stormwater flows. So the same would be expected in the soil layers as well.
May I make a comment?
No, Your Honor? Yes. So, yes, Councilmember Montgomery.
Hey, Jeff and Katie, what was the comment about the number of wells decided? Forty, why 40 and not 50 or why not 20 wells at the parking lot?
Yeah, so the 40 wells was determined based on the hydrologic analysis, so looking at the waterfall and the flow that will come to the project during the divine storm, as well as the soil capacity and infiltration rates established through the geotechnical exploration. So there was modeling performed. Initially in the concept phase, we actually had expected 50 dry wells based on preliminary analysis. And then the more detailed modeling that was performed during the design phase allowed us to refine that number. So it's based on mathematical calculations and modeling related to the onsite conditions from the drainage area as well as the soils.
I would have said, as long as it was a random number, I was good with it. You had to be there. So Katie, the second question, it's been vetted by LA County Engineering, they're good with it, you're good with it. This is on the paper, a good, solid, strong project, right?
Correct. And the project has gone, is going through the permitting process with LA County Flood Control District. They also reviewed the CEQA document, the mitigated negative declaration. So they're permitting the diversion structure and they're also responsible party to the CEQA document. And so they have been involved in review the process. They actually implement several of these types of projects themselves throughout the county as well.
And one last question, Your Honor. So maybe Jeff, and that's not for you, maybe for City Manager Moe or our city attorney. The insurance, question about insurance, Quinn, we know what the costs are. I know there's a cushion, you said, Jeff, of five man contingency in case something else happens. We've got a cushion in there. What happens on insurance-wise? What happens if this project damages in somehow, some way, neighboring properties? What's the answer and who pays for it?
Typically, it's the construction company. We have full indemnity for any impact, any damage created by the construction of this project.
We, Sandy Manhattan Beach does?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing further, Your Honor. My motion stands, but I'll make my motion once everybody finishes.
Okay, Mayor Proten, how worth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do really appreciate, is it Katie? Is that her name?
Katie Harrell.
There's so many engineers named Katie in our world. It's just so confusing.
We only have one.
We have one, but then her. But I really appreciate the answers to the questions because, you know, people bring up really good concerning questions. You live right there, you don't want your home to start sinking, et cetera. But I am, I am satisfied, but I understand it's still concerning to the homeowners. But I think we got some very good credible information there. One question, I think Stefan brought it up, and I think he might have misdated it a bit, but he said if it's only treating 60% of Manhattan Beach's stormwater, but I think, and I'm going to get clarification here, 60%, this is stormwater, but it's like 93% of Manhattan Beach? Or tell me?
No, it is 60%. It's representing the stormwater that falls in 60% of the city's land area. So you could consider it 60% of the stormwater that falls in the city of Manhattan.
Okay, so what happens to the other 40%?
So on the map where we showed in the upper northeast corner of the city, we have a portion about 15% of the city that drains to the Dominguez Channel.
The channel, right.
We are, tonight you will be considering a feasibility study in item 15 for a project to address stormwater going into Dominguez Channel.
Right.
The other, what is it, 25%?
You're the math guy, come on.
It is outfalling to the ocean at more distributed points. And there are, there's a project going on right now, the TMDL Trash Treatment Project. We just awarded a contract a couple of months ago, and I believe the contractor is starting on that. That will address trash coming out of those storm drains going into the ocean with those large CDS trash capture structures.
Right. And it was never intended, I mean, I think the mayor asked it and somebody else, it's never intended to treat chemically the water. I mean, that's, this is about keeping large things and other things out of the water.
In a water quality perspective, it is treating the water. It is not chemically altering it or cleaning it in the sense that we often think of outside of the realm of water quality.
Okay. All right. I also think that we can't underestimate just how much of an inconvenience at best it will be to the people who live right around there. And as somebody mentioned, you know, living around that park and that area has, there's been increased impacts. But unfortunately, during any kind of project like this, the construction phase is going to be really hard. It's going to be loud, your garage is going to be blocked, it's going to be dirty. But we have to do everything we can to respond to the residents and make sure our contractors are completely on it. And if they're not, that there's some sort of penalty. So there's a lot of reasons I'll be supporting this, but I did want to say that I understand it is going to be such a burden to the people who live around there. We have, we are mandated that we have to treat this water. We are a beach community. We value clean, quality water. And so, yes, some of, some of what comes out originates somewhere else, but we get to enjoy the beach. And so we want that water to be clean, even if it's not mandated. So I will be supporting the project as well.
Continuing, continuing with the questions. I had asked earlier, when I was first introduced to this, I asked to see a filtration project of this size anywhere close by? Similar kind of topography and things like that? And is there any?
Of this size, yes. The Argo Sub Basin Drain Project constructed on the north side of the LAX runway in Playa del Rey is a very large, I don't know the exact capture volume, but it does involve a 250-foot diameter tank that's 40 feet tall and fully buried and a series of 18 dry wells just north of LAX capturing flow out of the open Argo drain. That one was completed a couple of years ago and is in operation. There's also a large project in Culver City and several in the city of LA. If you want more information about those, I could defer that to Katie Harrell with CWE potentially.
Okay. But that's not at the beach, right? LAX, is that similar?
I mean, that one, that one is within a mile of the beach, but you're right, it's not within a couple hundred feet of the beach. But as far as scale, it is a larger project. You know, so the, the concept of large-scale infiltration projects, while it is newer within the last 10 years or so in LA County, there are quite a few of them either constructed or in design right now, and several that have already been put into operation.
Okay. So one thing that Ms. Harrell said was that an operation and maintenance plan will be completed after the construction?
After the design is finalized.
After the design?
It'll be implemented after it's constructed, but we will complete the O and M plan after the design is finalized.
Okay. And since this is dirty water going down, whatever, and we've got the wells, is there any odor or anything that comes back up? I mean, is it all trapped down below?
There is not generally odor associated with dry wells. If you had trapped debris that was not removed, you know, we did see odors coming from some of our catch basins underneath the dining decks. So any type of stormwater system that's capturing trash or debris that's not properly maintained could generate odors, but that comes down to a maintenance issue to address that.
Okay, so is the screens, are they designed, we're hoping to catch 100% of everything?
The smaller particles that are going to go through the screens will, if they are heavier, are largely going to be settled out in the sedimentation chamber, and that would routinely be vacuumed out by vac truck. So it would, it would be, you know, soil particles and other very small trash particles and probably microplastics.
So we heard a concern about what's happening at Palos Verdes because that's an introduction of water into foundations or into the soil and things like that. I know it could be considered apples to oranges, but how would that not be a concern here? You know, because where does that water filter into Portuguese Bend, for example? That's moving at a rate of nine inches a week or something?
Yeah, and you know, in the world of geology and geotechnical engineering, I think saying it's apples to oranges is a fair assessment. You know, the city of Manhattan Beach is built on ancient sand dunes. We are largely sandy soils, generally what they consider poorly graded sands, meaning particles largely the same size, and as well as silt, which would be finer than sand particles. I am by no means a geologist and not too familiar with the Palos Verdes cliffs, but I do know that it's completely different geology there. You have different soils present, you have different formations, and, you know, there are failure plains going through some of those materials. You get water seeping through a crack with, you know, and you can get slip plains. There's a lot of different geological phenomenon occurring there, but what it boils down to is that is a very different subsurface than we have here in Manhattan Beach.
Are we, still have more questions or do we want some?
No questions.
Okay, so discussion? Ready for discussion?
I feel like I've been discussing.
Well, I was going to pull you back and have you ask questions.
I have a motion, Your Honor.
I don't have questions.
You guys are good?
I was just going to make some comments.
Okay, yep, please.
It's really, you know, we're, man is trying to assist nature in filtering out the water. I mean, the largest filtration system we have around here is Biona Wetlands, and which takes the natural and concentrates it in a small area there. Now they're going to spend millions, if not over a billion, to try and restore it to what it was a millennia ago to try and filter out the stuff coming down Biona Creek. what it was a millennia ago to try and filter out the stuff coming down Biona Creek. So, you know, here we're concentrating the, a lot of runoff from Manhattan Beach and trying to filter that and clean that to the best of our ability in a natural way and send that back out to the ocean, back to the water table and the water cycle. So, you know, here, I think the engineering has proved they're making their best efforts. I, you know, words like presumed and things like that, from what we've heard tonight, this is the best science being used here to make this possible. Is it, is it perfect? No. In terms of inconvenience, we're all inconvenienced by construction in this town one way or another. This is an added one, so I'm sorry for that, but the end result is going to be something that is going to help us meet the requirements of the Clean Water Act and improve the water quality of the beach, and there's been nothing to show that it's going to be a danger or a threat to the properties in the area that have any evidence-based support for that. So I'm interested to hear what my colleagues say, but at this point, I see it moving forward.
Okay, Councilmember Lesnar.
There are a couple of references in the written staff report that I don't think we fully discussed in the presentation discussion, which I want to just read. First, this is the highest priority proposed project capable of significantly reducing bacterial trash and debris discharges into the South Santa Monica Wet Bay. We are responsible for that as a city. The stormwater monitoring data indicates that storm flows discharged at this location regularly exceed established limits for bacterial loading. This is one of the significant outflows into the South Santa Monica Bay that is contributing to the contamination of our ocean. We have an obligation to address this. This is something which we, as a council, in my prior service on council, began discussing, I believe, at least 12 years ago. Unfortunately, we've sought different ways to try and reach the public, and obviously it's difficult. Obviously, we had one member of the public indicated he lived nearby and had not heard about it. That is bad on us, and that is something I think we all are eager to address and looking at ways that we can inform our public about what we're doing here. I share the concerns of my colleagues at what this is going to mean for those living proximate to this site. This is going to be a huge challenge. It is a big project. For that, we regret it, but we are overdue to address our runoff into the Santa Monica Bay, which is having an impact, and for that reason, I will be supporting the motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
My motion is, and before I start the motion, to address the points, my colleagues are right. It will be inconvenient, everyone, Larry, you, all your neighbors, inconvenienced, definitely, for the greater good of the South Bay and good and good for us. It's not a mixture of other people's water, it's our own water. We're taking care of our own backyard. So we know, they answered the question past what's going on, the costs, Jeff, you answered it. The cushion, if it goes past our $5 million cushion, it's on us, depending on the override. Clean Water Act, yes, it's required. Doing the right thing with the right people, and unlike other cities, we're not kicking the can down the road. We're not kicking it, other cities do it. It's our responsibility with our own water to take care of it ourselves. We're doing it now. So outside from what's going on next door and what's happening to everybody else, this is the right thing going forward. We know what the costs are, which is the main thing about it, but I want to make sure that everyone understands that. If we don't do this, as well as you said, another 12 years, we should have done this 12 years ago, and we didn't do it then. Now's our chance, we're fully funded, with a little cushion built down on our side to move it forward. It is the right thing. So with that, my motion is to move to approve the conceptual plan, project layout, but first approve out Resolution Number 24-0043. Quinn, will you stop there?
Yeah, that's the, address the CEQA resolution first, and that is 24-0043, so there should be a motion on just that resolution.
Okay, I'll stop there. That's my motion.
I seconded that one.
Right. So I'm going to make some comments here. I feel uncomfortable with it, quite frankly. I feel that this is an experiment, because I haven't really seen evidence of another project this large. Its effectiveness, I'm very concerned about ongoing costs. I mean, look what happens. I mean, we may be handing the future Manhattan Beach 30 years from now, something that they're going to have to be looking at and saying, what were they thinking of 30 years ago? Because, you know, the maintenance costs, the $150,000 a year, I don't believe, because we haven't put aside money for its replacement, becomes a big capital project that has to be maintained. Now, this is not to say that I'm not interested in cleaning the water.
I understand that.
Okay. And, you know, just like I showed you today, earlier, you know, with the polar plunge, you know, here's that future generation that has to, you know, that wants to go into that water, hopefully not so cold, but they, we want to make sure, we got to hand it off to them, and it has to be clean. I just feel uncomfortable with this. I think you're introducing water into soil. It's everything we try to avoid when we do construction, and here we are. The visualization from that gentleman of a cube, 180-foot cube, so that means it's 180 feet on each side, going into this area and trying to filter down, you know, with every storm, how many times a year? I mean, it just, I don't know where that's been done. I don't know just how safe that can be with, you know, with sinkholes that are, you know, drywells that are down there, 40 of them, and then a layer of something on top of it, not sinking into the earth. I, listen, engineers are great, you know, we wouldn't have the kind of world we have without engineers. It just concerns me that it, that's, you know, untested in our area, our most beach-backed away from it for the water that they're going into, just for several of the unknowns that I can only hope work out, and work out not just initially, but on an ongoing basis. And where is that stuff going? I mean, where is it going to end up? I don't know if anybody can adequately say. We can run tests and engineering and things like that, but where is that pollution going to end up? Those polluted waters mixing in with seawater, does it eventually get out and into the ocean anyway? You know, so we'll go ahead, and we have a motion.
And my motion still continues, Your Honor.
Okay.
The first one, we have to call for the question.
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
There we go.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, colleagues.
So second motion would be B, the conceptual approval of the project.
Yes, I, I do, I, which is Resolution 24-. Oh, no.
That's C.
That's C, sorry. So now the conceptual project layout.
Correct. I second.
Thank you. There are three pieces to it, so call for the question.
Motion passes four to one.
And next is the coastal development permit. It's the Resolution Number 24-0044.
My motion is to adopt Resolution Number 24-0044.
I second.
Call for the question.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, staff.
Stand and get my legs back.
We have a ninth inning stretch.
Ninth inning stretch.
Are we still in seven?
Yeah.
Come on, this is, this is hardly, we're just getting started.
Steve said 11.
No, I said 12. Long recess.
Oh, we're not recessed, we're just standing.
We're just standing.
We're just standing, letting people clear out. Great job, staff.
Good job.
Definitely a great job.
Hey, tell them to do a good job, rookie. Good job.
Yeah, really good job. Well done.
I heard that, I heard that future.
Bryce, get used to this.
It has to, that's the best place.
Once every 15 years, you get one of these.
You can make the red one for her. You got time.
Steve said 11.
These people have been waiting.
All right. Bang the gun, get everyone out.
Okay. Come on, folks. We'll get going again.
All right, go, we're going to stand up. Let me get one of the legs back.
Where's, uh?
Bruce is right there.
No, Amy, where's she?
We can start without her. We're good.
I just asked folks to take the conversations outside.
It's got its feet in the fire, but it's.
Just make a motion to throw the next one. Well, it looks like this is retired early.
Hey, no dancing, sir, in the aisles. No dancing.
Try not to.
No workers' compensation cases.
We're good, Mayor, we're good to start it. We're just standing. She's right to your left.
I'm right here.
Oh, I didn't see. Well, come on. All right, here we go. Okay, on to number, agenda item number 13, consideration of the Parking and Public Improvements Commission, recommendations for initial traffic calming measures.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Taliya Mrazakanyan, your Community Development Director. I'd like to reintroduce Eric Zandley, our City Traffic Engineer, to present this item.
Thank you, Director Mrazakanyan. I'm Eric Zandley, the City Traffic Engineer. I'm here to present the PPIC's recommendations for the Oak Avenue and Manhattan Village Stopping Center Neighborhood Traffic Management Study. So by a quick way of background, we have been following the citywide neighborhood traffic management program, an iterative process where we go back and forth, we try some initial measures. If those work well, then we can stop there. If it doesn't work as well as we wanted to, we come back and go through the process and outreach to the residents to see what they're interested in. It's very much a resident-owned plan. We've been out to them and invited them to come to our meetings twice and really listen to what they were interested in for the neighborhood plan. In 2014, the shopping center expansion was approved, and at that time, the developer agreed to contribute $20,000 towards this plan. Recently last year, the City Council reviewed initial traffic calming measures along Valley Drive, and those are still in progress, and if you recall, and you probably have stopped at the stop sign at Valley Drive and Pine, and so that's part of those traffic calming measures. In August of last year, the PPIC discussed some initial study findings about the Oak Avenue area, volumes and speeds, before and after studies, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that. And then in March, the PPIC made recommendations based on our staff and the traffic engineers' Traffic volumes, we did before and after studies in 2018 as a baseline before the mall began construction, and then we did follow-up counts in December of 2022 after the mall was substantially completed and occupied during the holiday season to try to get a worst-case scenario out of that. We found that, generally speaking, there's about a 15% decrease in traffic volumes across the board, on Sepulveda Boulevard and in our neighborhoods, and that has held true with our Engineering and Traffic surveys as well. So people are changing the way they're getting around now, and a lot of them are staying home or not, you know, working from home, going to school from home and those kinds of things, and it's shown on our, on our streets. With regard to traffic volumes, we did extensive volume studies all across the study area. If you'll see here, the study area is basically bounded by Rosecrans, Meadows, Magnolia, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and Pine, so that's kind of the square that we're talking about here. These are before and after studies, they're in your report. With regard to speeds, our before and after speeds were also taken on many of those same roads. Generally speaking, the speeds have remained unchanged, so the 85th percentile is what we go by, which is the speed at which 85% of the traveling public are driving that speed or less. We did have a couple of little segments that had a little bit higher speed limit, but only by a mile or two per hour. This is the map of the vehicle speed area, study areas. Our collisions history, we looked at from 2018 through 2022. We didn't find any particular areas with any concentration of traffic collisions, spotty collisions here and there, but you do see a number of collisions along our major streets, which is to be expected along Sepulveda Boulevard, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and Rosecrans Avenue. We mailed notices, and this is to over 1,000 residences within the study area, both for the August meeting and the March meetings, collected that information. We've had lots of feedback, it was really great, both from emails, phone calls, at the meeting itself, and we have compiled that and put a lot of that into your report and probably made your council packages that much thicker. But some of the concerns were high volumes and backed-up traffic on Marine, speeding on 19th Street, speeding on Oak, requests for stop signs at several of the locations, of which we looked at every single one of those requests, pedestrian crossing concerns at Marine and Cedar, limited visibility at 18th and Cedar Avenue, safety concerns around Ardmore Avenue, 303rd Street and Oak, where that comes together and becomes the one-way street out to Sepulveda Boulevard, commercial parking in and around 30th Street and Oak Avenue behind the barrier on 30th Street, unsafe turning movements at Marine and 25th, and requests for pedestrian access through that barrier at 30th Street. We use the toolbox of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program to look at initial traffic measures. There's Level 1 and Level 2 measures that are implemented as initial measures, and we will try those. Those are less impactful and less expensive as well. Level 3 are reserved for those locations where we might want to go the extra mile or we have a continuing problem that we want to address. We did recommend several measures. First of all, installing speed limit signs at all of the entranceways to our neighborhoods to make sure that everyone knew that it's a 25 mile an hour zone, and to construct a curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Ardmore, where Ardmore meets up with 30th Street in that curve area, and I'll show you a plan for that, and it addresses several different issues, and conduct a pedestrian safety study at Marine Avenue and Cedar, and this is the intersection that we recently updated with dual left-hand turns coming out of the mall. We also addressed some of the timing issues for the left turn that goes into the mall. But as, by doing that, we removed one of the crosswalks on the east leg of the intersection, so pedestrians, if you want to cross Marine Avenue, you cross on the west leg. Also, installing multiway stop signs are justified at four of the five locations that were requested. We're also looking at prohibiting parking along the west side of Oak Avenue at 27th Street and along the west side, just for, improving the visibility at that intersection just for a few feet, and trimming the tree branches on the opposite corner to improve the visibility at that particular intersection. We're also recommending a study to determine if a resident parking permit program might be justified along Oak Avenue. A lot of those homes are backing up to commercial businesses along Sepulveda Boulevard. There's actually a couple of driveways from those commercial businesses that go out onto Oak Avenue, so we're going to, we would take a look at that. This is a picture of the sidewalk area that we are proposing. It's a combination of things. It's taking the existing striping that is in the curve, that narrows down that curve to slow people down, and it has several delineators that are always knocked over at that corner, and make it an actual curb and gutter. and make it an actual curb and gutter. By doing that, we're able to actually continue and extend the sidewalk that's along the south side of Ardmore and bring it all the way through to Sepulveda Boulevard. So it actually makes an accessible connection between Ardmore and the businesses along Sepulveda Boulevard.
Eric, on that slide, where is Extra Care? To my far right, top right?
Yeah.
The Extra Care is to the right of the screen.
Yeah.
You can see the parking lot for Extra Care along the right side of that diagram.
Buy you a laser pointer for next time.
Do I have a laser pointer?
It's all right. I got your message. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
From Extra Care, there is a sidewalk that continues on to Sepulveda Boulevard. It also allows those drivers that are coming out of Oak Avenue to get a better view of the cars that are coming around the corner
Yes.
of Ardmore Avenue, and that's been a big concern as well from those residents in that neighborhood, so they can have a better chance at looking at those oncoming cars.
So that's a red curb, so there won't be any?
It's red only because for design, but yes, it would not allow parking along there.
Amen to that.
Yes. As I mentioned, over a thousand residents were notified in the study area for each one of those outreach meetings. We were invited, we invited them then. We invited them again for the meeting tonight. So they've been notified three times, and I really appreciate all of the input that we had from all of the residents as well. The PPIC recommended the staff's recommendations, so I won't go over and repeat them again, but they are exactly the same. And with that, we would request an adoption of a Resolution Number 0045 approving stop signs in all directions at the intersections of 17th and Oak, 19th and Oak, 19th and Elm, and 18th and Cedar Avenue. This also helps address a lot of those concerns that you've heard already from the residents tonight. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Eric, well done. I appreciate that. I like all the suggestions you put up there. My only question to you is, once council approves this tonight, how long do you think it would take to put those stop signs in place at those four locations you mentioned? What's your timeframe estimate?
Well, our stop signs are in stock. They're not special signs, and so that's great.
Guys heard that. We're in stock. No chain supplies is here.
And we do have a striping truck that
Great.
was approved, so we can get them in right away.
Perfect. Thank you. No other questions, Your Honor?
Okay, Councilmember Lesser?
Just a quick follow-up on the capital improvement project that would be involved in extending the sidewalk where Oak meets Sepulveda, or is it Pacific Coast Highway?
Pacific Coast Highway.
My understanding is that's not in the budget in the current five-year CIP, or tell me when that would be?
That's correct. So by approving the measures tonight, we would then add that to the CIP as a future project to be determined priority of funding when you review the CIP.
Thank you. I have more comments.
So a quick question for me is, would there be addition, you know, enhanced enforcement when these get installed?
Yes, we are asking for enhanced enforcement of the hotspots.
Okay. And then also on Sepulveda, there was indication that that sign had been there for many years, which I know was there, restricting left turns from 3 to 7 p.m. Where'd it go, and how can we confirm, and can we replace it?
I don't know when and why it was removed, or it fell over, or it was run over. I can ask Caltrans, it's in their jurisdiction, and they make the determination of whether or not a turn restriction is made there. And it's usually for safety reasons, for a collision history at that intersection
Right.
during certain hours.
Exactly, yeah. So if you could do that, that would be great.
They could have, they could have removed it, actually.
Exactly. Middle of the night, who?
I can also
Caltrans.
Yeah.
I can also find out if there's an accident history there.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I, we want to find out.
A recent accident history, yeah.
Okay. And then Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you. They must have been confused and went to PCH and Promos.
The wrong 19th Street.
So in the interim, knowing how our CIP list inches along, in the interim, could we put some of those supersized bots, dots, to keep people from running over the things that we already have out there now and popping them out?
Yes, we can. We can. There's actually a modular system that has like a composite curb, if you will, that creates that as well.
Your Honor, last question. Can you add the paint scraping side posts? If someone tries that, the liners will actually have a side paint scraping, paint remover next to it. So if you try to slide by it, it'll take this paint right out of your vehicle.
Really?
Absolutely. The thing's working like a charm.
Yeah.
Well
I just go to the car wash
The traffic calming device.
And they, you know, rub it out. Okay.
So, so public comment? Are there any other questions? Okay, public comment? Been so patient.
You want to let the mayor know you have a first and a second to move this item?
Yes. Yes, we do have a
We should have public
A motion from Mayor Franklin
That's you.
for this, and seconded by Councilmember Montgomery.
You should hear public comment.
Yeah, yeah, but public comments.
That's after the whole meeting. Come on.
Chance to be on TV.
By the way, that site's been gone a long time. 19th and Oak, we use it every day. No.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Wandel, resident of the 1800 block of Oak. We're in support of this, so I'll keep it short. Sounds like most people are as well. Heard about this about a year ago. Spent a lot of time talking with a lot of our neighbors, probably at least three dozen of our neighbors, the traffic engineer who we've had many a conversation by phone, email, letters, and otherwise. And, you know, through the last year, I really was surprised how quickly all of our neighbors came together and acknowledged the fact there was a problem here. Since we've had plenty of time this evening, I was reading through the comment letters and everything else that came through. It sounds like well over 100 people supported this, which, you know, when I started this a year ago, I never expected that if we had more than 10 people supporting this, I'd be surprised. It's definitely been a problem for some of us who live a few houses from the intersections that we're talking about. We have heard definitely plenty of accidents, near misses at several times a week, high speed, low visibility. I'll spare you. You've probably seen the report. Anyway, I don't believe there's anyone who's opposed to this. As far as I can tell, the PPIC was in support, traffic engineer's in support. So appreciate your time and hope this goes through tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Anybody online, Mark?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, so we will close public comment? And comments?
Yeah, I just
We're all set?
Is the motion
There's a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protam.
It's been a long, it's been a long. Yeah, no, thank you. I'm thrilled that this is coming forward with support from both, from staff and the PPIC. These are long overdue. It's fantastic that the neighborhood came together as it did, and it was impressive to see all the signatures, read all the letters, but also to see the work that our staff has put into it. Eric, you've been very busy, and it's always really thorough work. I don't live there, but I, for several years, have cut through, no, for several years.
No.
No, no, no. I would have to drive actually to CTJ, who we, you know, honored the Rabbi earlier, through those streets, and it was always like, you know, you're just scared to go through an intersection because you just don't know what's coming. I mean, so it is, I know it well. It is so overdue, so I'm really glad that we're going to be doing something about it.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
Echoing those comments, all of us here on council have dealt with efforts to calm Oak and Elm throughout our career. I've only been involved with the city for about 20 years, starting on the Parking and Public Improvements Commission, and this was one of the first things we dealt with. The original traffic management plan came out of the 2002 council. I think Councilmember Napolitano sat on. Councilmember Montgomery was involved with implementing it. The mayor was involved with, get to that in a moment, on the Parking and Public Improvements Commission as well, and Mayor Protam, Hoerth, and I were on the council that required the developers of the mall as a part of the condition to develop the study, and that is why we're here. It's great to see the neighborhood coalesce around these proposals, and I'm in favor of moving forward.
That's great.
Your Honor, I was just gonna add that I used to live on 2800 block of Elm.
Right.
So for eight years, I knew what those street corners were like, just a duck, like Amy said. Every corner, you took your life with your own hand to go past the corner. Stick your nose out, someone comes right by you. So this is one that's turned on a long time, but that's on us. But we're finally getting there, and I'm second to the mayor's motion. I'm good to go.
And I just want to make a comment that this is how I got into politics here in Manhattan Beach, was just the same thing, stop signs on Pine because I live at Pine and 19th, and stop signs on Marine, and that was 30 years ago. We took all of our little five-year-old and six- and seven-year-old kids, and they drew their posters, "I Don't Want to Die," and we marched along Marine Avenue. My wife is in public relations and got the news crews out there because it was just a raceway, both east and west, and north and south. So my heart went out to the new families now in the area, and so very much encouraged them to do this, and very pleased that you voted the ways that you have to really increase the safety in that area. So thank you very much.
Didn't you have a costume that you used to dress?
I was stopper. Yeah, I was stopper. I admit.
You missed that, Stefan. You missed that.
There's some photos somewhere. Right. So calling for the question?
Just to make sure, this is for staff's recommendation, which is one through six.
Yes.
Yes, I second one through six, Your Honor.
Right. So can we have a voting screen? And I won't make a mistake this time. Great. Thank you all.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number, congratulations.
And just for the record, I'm not sure C was part of one through six, but it's also, the motion also included C.
C?
Yeah. So you have one through six of the traffic measures. C is the exemption pursuant to
Yes.
Got it. I'm good with that, too.
Yep, good, good. Great. I want to see the neighbors hug those stop signs when they get in.
We'll have a party.
There you go. You got it.
He'll bring costume for you.
Manhattan Beach, of course, there'll be a party.
All right. So item number 14, Consideration of Declaring Parking and Public Improvement Commissions. Member Large Seat Number One Woo-hoo. Kirschenbaum vacant, and appoint from the list of interested applicants from the recent Annual Boards and Commissions interview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa Tamara, City Clerk. It's my pleasure to introduce Patricia Matson, Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. Also available is Eric Zandley, City Traffic Engineer Liaison for the PPIC.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Lisa mentioned, I'm Patty Matson, Management Analyst. On, by way of background, on May 7th, the City Clerk's Office was notified that Commissioner Alan Kirschenbaum had been absent from four Parking and Public Improvement Commission meetings. Per the municipal code, a member who is absent from four meetings in a 12-month period shall, upon the occurrence of the fourth absence, automatically vacate their seat. Per the Boards and Commissions handbook, that 12-month period is from June 1st to May 31st to coincide with the commissioner's terms. The City Clerk's Office did receive a formal letter of resignation from Mr. Kirschenbaum yesterday, and since the annual Boards and Commissions interviews and appointments were recently conducted, staff is recommending that the City Council appoint an individual to the seat that previously expressed interest in the PPIC. Staff reached out to the eight individuals, and all have reconfirmed their interest in being considered for the seat. The interested applicants are Stephen Bardino, Jacqueline Chu, Scott Greast, Heather Kim, Daniel Kurz, Paul Mizurich, Jill Schechter, and Jim Yang. Staff is recommending that the City Council make a motion to declare PPIC Seat Number One vacant, and then appoint an individual from the list of interested applicants from the recent Annual Boards and Commissions interviews and appointment process. Whomever is appointed to the seat will fulfill the remainder of the term for Seat Number One, which expires on May 31st, 2026. I'm available for any questions.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I could, I don't know if you want to keep that second there.
I'll wait.
I'm going to suggest that we not declare the seat vacant. I think there's a mistake going on here. I spoke with Commissioner Kirschenbaum, and as indicated by his letter of resignation, he wishes that the rules requiring in-person Zoom attendance were changed. He was not aware that he had an alternative, which was to attend by Zoom the meetings that he missed, like we do from time to time. So I, you know, not, if he had missed it knowing that that was an option, then I would say, yes, let's move forward with this. He's served our city on commission for a number of years. He wants to continue to do that. You know, this is a seat on a commission we've been, have a hard time to fill. I think he should be allowed to continue on, knowing that that's an option. If he continues to be absent in the future, of course, dismiss him. But this was a simple miscommunication or misunderstanding of what the actual abilities were to attend by Zoom. So I would say, given that it was a, you know, inadvertent mistake, that he'd be allowed to continue on, with the advisor that, you know, the Zoom is an option, but if he fails to then follow the proper procedures to appear by Zoom, then we reconsider.
Your Honor, for the vote, just want to hear from staff, Patty, or Eric, or our comm. dev. director. The story, what happened, was he told, was he not told to understand in-person versus Zoom, so that we all hear the same thing?
All of our commissioners, including PPIC, we let them know that when the rules changed, I think it was mid-year this year, that if they were to attend remotely, they had to do it under standard Brown Act rules. That's exactly how we've been running the Planning Commission as well. I think the issue with the PPIC was that we were running into an in-person quorum issue, if I'm not mistaken, right? Because we had multiple occasions where multiple commissioners were absent.
Can I rephrase my question? Were they using Zoom, too, though? The people who were absent, or they were just not showing up at all?
They were just not showing up. So the timing didn't work out.
Can I rephrase my question, Your Honor? So was he ever told that he had to be here in person for, in person for these meetings, so they have a quorum?
Yes, I believe we told them all the requirements.
I'm wondering if Ms. Kirschenbaum was ever told, hey, you have to be here in person to meet the quorum?
Yes.
So he was told before he started the absences?
Maybe there was a misunderstanding on his part, but we communicated the same thing to both commissions.
Were the other people appearing by Zoom?
Not for, not for PPIC.
But for the Planning Commission.
They were absent for PPIC. Because, because we had a longstanding absence on the PPIC, it was throwing our quorum off on several occasions.
Councilmember Lesser?
Well, I'm gonna have to add that pursuant to our code, it automatically vacates, although the, the member may appeal the forfeit of the membership. So if you have four misses within the 12-month period, it's automatic. But he could appeal, and if there's exigent circumstances, if you, if the council feels that he needed more information about how to appear by Zoom, which won't solve the problem of the forum I mean, the quorum.
In-person quorum.
Yeah.
I'd also like to note that there was one incident where maybe we could have worked it out, but we didn't even have a notification about the absence in advance.
According to him, he didn't know that Zoom was an option. I'm just going off.
Let David go ahead and then I'll
So first, a clarification. My understanding is members of the Planning Commission have routinely participated by Zoom. Is that correct?
Yes. When the rules changed, we made it clear that if you're going to, if any of the commissioners are going to attend by Zoom, it has to be under, in accordance with the Brown Act requirements for remote attendance. We've been placing their location on the agenda, requiring them to post it and show us proof that they've posted it at that location. So we've been strictly following those procedures.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, just to confirm what process we would follow if there was a majority that was receptive to an appeal by Commissioner Kirschenbaum?
Yes, he'll have to appeal. I mean, there is a letter of resignation, but pursuant to the code, if he doesn't appeal, it's automatic.
So would the best course be to defer or continue this matter?
That's within your discretion.
And to give him an opportunity to appeal if he so desires?
Yes.
How can it be automatic if we have to declare a vacancy?
It's, when this was written back in 2008, it says, upon occurrence of the fourth absence, it's automatic.
Okay.
And you may want to consider changing that. You know, you've had difficulty in the past on certain boards, getting quorums, and so maybe an ordinance change would be appropriate, but that's, that's what it said. maybe an ordinance change would be appropriate, but that's what it says.
So I have a question. How many of the absences didn't have to do with anything with Zoom?
I mean, he was absent four times.
Okay, but he said he didn't understand. Would he have attended each one of those by Zoom if he could, or...
I'm not sure. He hadn't personally requested of me to attend on Zoom, and maybe he did.
He told me he would.
Eric?
He what?
He told me he would have.
All four?
I don't think he understood that Zoom was an option.
Quorum.
I mean, can he ask?
I understand.
So one of the absences was a personal absence that he told us that he was not going to attend at all. One absence was not notified to us at all. He just didn't show up. And the last two absences in March and April were that he was in Washington, D.C., and that those were what we heard from him were going to be why he didn't attend. At the time, before we have... Well, we've only had four attended... Attending commissioners because we've had a vacancy for over a year. And so sometimes we did say you have to appear in person because we need a quorum in the chambers.
Got it. Okay.
And then how many meetings were canceled just by... I mean, every now and then we see that a commission meeting is canceled.
Sure. From June, we've had six meetings. Four of those he's been absent from, and we've canceled three.
One meeting was scheduled, but we had to cancel it because we didn't have a quorum.
How many other absences are there on the commission?
Our other...
Stephen D'Amico, who was recently replaced. We had a significant number of absences when Commissioner D'Amico was on the commission, but the council recently replaced him.
Okay. Significant, meaning four?
Four plus.
Four plus? Well, how does it get to plus?
Right. Four. Right.
It started before that. He's not... Not the same term.
Okay, so...
Okay. So our motion is for what?
I would... Let's put it this way. We... Let's... I would suggest we get Mr. Kirschenbaum the ability to appeal at the next hearing if he wants to. If he doesn't, if he chooses not to, then we continue on with a new appointment. If he wants to appear before us, then you can pepper him with questions as to why he was absent, why did he get new Zoom or anything like that.
If the council...
Everybody?
Would the council like for us to suggest that he appeals in writing in advance, and we can pass that along to the...
If he desires.
Okay, so we're not going to vote on this?
Directions enough on that. So that will be probably at the next council meeting.
And just, I do have a question. So there is a PPIC meeting on Thursday, correct?
Correct.
All right, so he should plan to attend that meeting because as of now, he's still on the commission.
Not according to the process law.
Yeah, that's the... The problem is the code.
So...
I mean, I would definitely suggest that you change the code, but that's...
Well, so it's interesting. So he may desire to attend to show that he's... But he's not on the commission, so he would have to appeal. Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, Mr. City Attorney, if there was interest in council to amend the code, would that have to be a future agenda item, or is that something that could come back with this item at the next meeting?
That could be done... It doesn't have to go through a three-step process. I could get that direction from the mayor, if that's what the mayor wants, and we could put it on the agenda for the public to consider.
Okay.
Sure.
Is that something?
Could do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, I would just like to add that we do have a Boards and Commissions handbook coming to the council soon for consideration, correct?
So don't print that baby yet.
Wise words.
Okay, so moving on.
We just do this stage of it all over again.
To number 15, consideration of a resolution approving a professional design services agreement to GeoSynTech Consultants.
The interest of time, if council would prefer not to get a presentation on this, having read the staff report, we're here to answer questions.
So moot.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Yep.
So are there questions, I guess?
So moot for...
Questions? We just move on. Any questions? Not public comment?
I don't have questions. Oh, I've lost my screen. We've all lost our screens.
Well, I've lost our iPad screen.
Ah, there it is.
There we go. It's back.
So...
Tell you what, I think we should get at least a minor setup by just explaining what percentage of our stormwater would be captured in this study. We had a preamble by virtue of the earlier item on the agenda, but why don't you just very briefly explain what we're considering?
Yes. So following up on the earlier item, 14% of the city's runoff goes to the Dominguez Channel, which is east of the city limits and flows essentially from Inglewood down through the cities down to Carson and San Pedro, where it discharges out in Pacific Ocean. We have stormwater obligations on that side of our city as well, and the project that's being proposed would be to infiltrate water on that side of town. We want to hire a firm to do a feasibility study to see if it's really viable, and there's agreement and appropriation... A reappraisal request for your consideration tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So do we need to have a motion?
Yes.
Or you need public comment?
Public comments.
Like the way he thinks, though.
Yep. Let's get this along. Public comments?
Or...
Saying none here? How about online?
We do have Craig Cadwalader.
Craig, ready to snatch victory from the jaws of defeat.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name is Craig Cadwalader again, Policy Coordinator for Certified South Bay and Chair of the Safe Clean Water Program, South Santa Monica Bay Watershed Area Steering Committee. And I just want to point out a couple of things. I did allude to our challenges with funding. Previously, we approved all but one project that was submitted, including some project modification requests for this fifth year go around, and we couldn't do them all because the existing commitments from earlier years, these are all five-year commitments, were using up 80% of the funds. And I suggest you go forward. This would be a... If you were asking for funding from the Safe Clean Water Program, it would be a technical resource program request, and we have a cap of $300,000, which obviously was incorporated into this material. And the L.A. County Board of Supervisors voted on May 7 to have the Chief Engineer of the county decide whether we were going to accept projects every year or every other year. Because of this funding challenge, I'm not sure which way that will go, but that is a potential... I would suggest jump on it and move with it, and if it's not feasible, you can't get... You need to do a feasibility study to get funded, and if it's not feasible, at least you'll find out then. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
There's no additional request.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll close public comments. Any discussion? Any vote? And we have a motion to accept?
Your Honor, I made the motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-042 Real Rate Funds.
And you have a second from me? So can we vote? Nice.
Motion passes 5-0.
And we will be a model of drywells.
We ought to be a model of clean water.
There'll be tourists coming by to see our drywells.
Model of clean water.
Finance Director Shirelian has a very brief presentation for the budget.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Steve Shirelian, Finance Director. Tonight, we don't have a formal presentation on the continued discussion of fiscal year 24-25 operating budget and five-year capital improvement program. We presented the proposed budget back on May 7 to City Council, and last week, we had our first budget study session along with the CIP, where department heads had an opportunity to get into their expenditure programs, along with performance measures, department objectives, as well as additional investments that were included in next year's budget. Public Works Director Lee and I are here to answer any questions on the budget or CIP alongside with the entire executive team. After we receive council feedback tonight, we would like to further... We would like some further direction on the second study session, which is set for next Tuesday on the 28th of May, which is currently set as needed. Alternatively, we will focus on bringing the fiscal year 25 budget and the five-year CIP for a public hearing and adoption on June 4. Thank you. We're available to answer any questions.
Councilmember Lester?
Director Shirelian, you're reading the room well in terms of our eagerness for not having a long meeting. On the other hand, there was direction by council to explore the allocation of surplus funds and changes to fund balances to supplement our CIP. Can you briefly review what our options might be with this budget or future budgets to augment our savings of capital improvement project funding for some of these big projects that we don't have sufficient funds, if you're in a position to do so tonight? And if you're not, that's okay, too.
I will. I'll give you a brief update. As, you know, we mentioned a few things at the study session. One of the things is we do have that need for recurring funds for the CIP. We got some big projects potentially in the pipeline. I know there's a survey that's being... Going to be conducted, and one of the items we'll ask is if there's a kind of bandwidth for any kind of tax... Sales tax increase for that, to be able to pay for those big projects. But that's surveys forthcoming, potentially get that on a future ballot or an upcoming ballot. There's other things that we have. We have fund balance in the general fund. We're currently moving $1 million this year, and we've committed another million over the next four years. But in addition to that, we do have some items that we can look at on the menu, which is looking at year-end surpluses and making a transfer when we bring our act to council in December and being able to make that transfer early on so that we can build it into the CIP program for the next following budget year. But those items, we want to work through. We want to bring them back through the finance subcommittee over the summer and then bring you some items in the late part of summer to be able to take, you know, digest. You know, CIP needs more than just budget dust, so we really need to kind of look at long-term planning and sustainability for the capital improvement projects in the city for the aging infrastructure.
Thank you. And I have one question related to the CIP for our Public Works Director, real quick. Earlier this evening, we did discuss the extension of the sidewalk on Oak Avenue at Sepulveda Boulevard. That is not part of the current five-year CIP, but to the extent that council was interested in having at least a placeholder or getting it in line somehow, what would be the appropriate way to do so?
Give us direction to do that, I think would be the short answer. I'm not sure on what the magnitude of that cost.
So a bicycle has two wheels and a handlebar?
I'm not that funny, I guess.
Wow, that was weeks ago.
Hours.
So I would say that our staff has put the 96 projects in front of you in an order that we think is... In the priorities, as we knew them prior to tonight, and in a way that is feasible and for the projects to have work program for this upcoming fiscal year, we think that's challenging yet attainable. And so if there was a desire to supplant something in there with, say, this new project, we'd have to look at that and come back to you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Napolitan?
A couple of things. One is, I don't see the need right now for a meeting next week. We haven't had... We haven't generated the interest to do that. I think most of this, and one of our folks who contacts us on the budget frequently, you know, I think things have solidified, and they do over the year, as to what the budget's going to look like for the next year. Again, except for the CIP. And so I don't... Well, I don't think that the meeting next week is necessary. I think that discussion about future CIP funding, if we're going to actually do these projects, we keep saying 177 million in unfunded project, and trust me, there's a lot more out there that we could add to that list, including this, which I would give direction tonight as well to include this as a future CIP project, the Ardmore 33rd... Ardmore 33rd Street? Yeah. Or Ardmore... Oh, yeah. Ardmore 33rd, the inclusion of that in the CIP for approval. But, you know, I guess one thing is, we need to get going on that survey so that the finance subcommittee can review it, but also we need to be cognizant in doing so of what the drop dead date is, I believe in August, to go for a November ballot measure. Thank you, Your Honor.
We have time?
We do.
Okay. Can I just add one thing in there?
Yes.
I'm not sure, Eric, where the status was that it was. I can't remember the last time. My brain's dead at 10:28. I know our camera program's still working. I know it's going to drop priority for it to go move along. So as long as it stays in your top priority schedules, and I haven't seen the schedule in a year, so...
CIP?
I know. I need to look at it and see where it is. Let's start to... Once again, an update on where the cameras are.
Yes, so camera project has been designed up to this point. It's three phases. We're currently in the process of constructing phases, one and two simultaneously. Three is already designed, and we bid out in the next month or so, with council hopefully considering a construction contract for that third phase this summer. And then in the five-year forecast... I'm sorry, the five-year plan for the CIP, we've got $4.172 million for the camera project overall. And so we're investing heavily on this line item in the CIP fund, and I've talked with Chief Johnson and Director Guardato in IT, and they're working on a plan on how we're going to, after we get past these first three phases with the city facilities, how we're going to get those cameras and where those cameras are going to be in the public spaces, whether that's going to be in parks, in other facilities that the city owns, on streets and whatnot.
Thank you. Nothing further, Your Honor.
All right, great. So we discuss and provide direction?
Public comment.
Public comment? After public comments?
Technically, public comment.
Any public comments here? How about online?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, we close public comments. Discussion?
First question is, do we need the meeting next week?
I say we don't.
No.
I don't think we need it.
Okay. And then the next is just to follow up with the survey and bring that back to the... Set up a meeting for the subcommittee, right?
Yes. We have a meeting with the polling firm next week with staff, and we anticipate being in the field probably the middle of June.
And then just a question here. We do have the ability to go on this November's ballot if we choose to put this on by...
I think there's still time.
August, yeah.
I think August is later.
Okay.
Kind of late.
All right. So moving on, right? Is that enough? City Manager Mau?
I think that's enough, Your Honor. We'll have a meeting next week, and we'll come back on the 4th for adoption.
Okay, great. AB 1234 reports. You're better at this.
Governor Napolitan and I both attended the Contract Cities Conference this past week. Most of you don't know it, the Contract Cities used to be those cities that contract with the county sheriffs or fire supervisors are there, one-on-one time to find what they're Uh, Congressman Napolitan, I both attended the Contract Cities Conference this past week. Uh, most of you don't know it. The Contract Cities used to be those cities that contract with the county, sheriffs or fire. Supervisors are there, one-on-one time to find what they're doing. It's county-wide, especially metro issues that we're all hearing about, what's going on. It's one-on-one time, and our public safety with sheriffs and fire department across the county. You're hearing more and more about that. That was the highlights of what I thought was there, and, um, definitely, we, we need to be there to hear. Things are talking about countywide. We don't hear it anywhere else. Just a chance to talk to it by ourselves, so, in front of my colleagues, for things I missed.
No, we had lots of good sessions with the supervisors, uh, lots of one-on-one time and with Sheriff Luna as well on public safety throughout the region, uh, and many other things. And, and it was just, uh, great to share ideas and interact with our fellow, um, electeds across all of LA County, and there was a lot of good input and, uh, you know, a, a desire to work on a regional basis for a lot of things.
Those of you wondering, uh, Councilor Napolitan, get to carry the city flag to the procession of all the cities that were there? Get to carry our flag through. We have that on tape.
Only because they couldn't find you yet.
Did a good job.
Tracks.
Thank you. I didn't trip.
Nope, didn't trip.
Excellent. Want to see that photo?
Yeah.
It's been destroyed. Consideration, we need a third vote for the consideration of a request.
Submut.
Mayor Franklin?
Got it.
So, we got it? City Manager report?
Uh, yes, just briefly tonight. Uh, typically, the council goes dark one meeting in August for a summer recess. Uh, and we were, uh, looking for council direction on potentially doing that at the August 6th meeting. Uh, so we would be dark from the 16th until the first meeting, the second meeting in August.
So 6th, 16th of July.
Right, until the 20th of August.
Oh, so canceling the first week, uh, meeting in August instead of the last meeting in August?
I had a question.
I thought there was discussion of potentially doing some audio updates, and that was one of the reasons for the potential cancellation.
Well, the audio updates in here are, it's going to take longer than the break that we would have. It's, basically, we're going to close the chambers after the 16th and not come back and hold meetings here until the first meeting in September. Whatever meetings we do have would be held over at police-fire, where we have the capability of broadcasting from there.
Thank you.
And commission meetings would be held there as well.
So, but just, all you're saying is not meeting the first meeting in August, which is the 6th?
That would be our suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's where we go dark.
That sounds, that sounds like a vacation to me.
So, what, I guess my one question, though, is if we do want to put something on the November ballot, again, what is the, did, I know it's in August, but I don't know if it's the first meeting or second meeting.
Good question.
Could we hold a special?
Special meeting.
Yes, I, I think it's actually run the 10th, but that's just from past, past years. But I don't know, the county would tell us. The county would tell us the last day.
Can we double-check that?
It should be on the calendar.
The 10th is a Saturday.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, um, I was in wear, so I can look it up on the calendar.
Your Honor, just a question. Can we have a special meeting with that one item only? If we need to have that meeting August 6th to be one item only, nothing else?
Because when, and I, I say this because when would the next opportunity to put something on the ballot be? Is, we're not going to do a special election, I don't see.
No.
And you're limited. You may not be able to do a special election, depending on the nature of the, the measure.
Right, it might have to go to the next municipal election two years later.
Correct.
So...
Could we, do you think that we would be able to make that decision in July, though?
Maybe, if we get the results back.
You know, Steve, it's, or Councilmember Napolitan, it's a great point. We might want to, can we not, until we find out this information, can we not make this decision?
Yeah, you don't need to make it tonight, or you could choose to do it the second meeting of August, if you would prefer.
If we're allowed to.
I'm sorry, I mean, go dark the second meeting of August.
Go dark, got it.
Yes.
Go dark the second.
We have the option for a special meeting only on that night for one item only. That's your third option, once we know.
Yeah, one night only, one item only, right?
Yeah, but once again, um, we'll find out the, the last date that we can get this to the, to the county.
AB homework.
It's just on our website on there.
Moving on, City Attorney report?